This is a regular meeting of the Cameron County Commissioners Court. It is the 26th day of September 2013. It is now 8:30 a.m. As we do all meetings, we will start with a brief moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance to the U.S. flag and the Texas flag. And I'd like to ask the Commissioners Court to lead us in those two pledges. Please rise.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Public comment? Consent? Are there any items under consent that need to be addressed separately? I've been asked to pull out item double E. And that's all I've been asked to pull out to discuss. Anything else?
Judge, I have a question on O.
Okay, look, we're gonna pull out item O for discussion.
Um, let's see. S?
S.
Let's see. Let's see. Instead of 20, it's just... Uh, double G?
Double G.
Double H?
And double H.
Double G in which one?
Double H.
And triple W.
And triple W.
And they're just questions.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
Judge?
Yes, sir.
Okay, can you pull out a double? Can you pull out E?
Item E, okay.
Um, on double C, that needs to read October 10th in the backup instead of September 26th.
Okay.
So we don't need to pull it out?
No, we'll just make that change.
Make the change. On double X?
Double X.
Instead of 20, it should read 10 radios.
Okay.
And that's it.
Well, if we can make those changes, Judge, on the triple W?
Okay.
It's just a registration fee of $50 that we didn't put on there.
All right, add the $50 to the registration fee.
And one more on my double K for the auditoriums. Who wants to pull it out?
And double K to pull out. Okay, do I hear a motion to approve consent with the exception of those items?
Can I have double E if we can pull it out to discuss?
And double E? I thought we already had that one.
It's pulled out. So moved.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Hernandez, seconded by Commissioner Gatsa. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Item carries. Double, I mean, on item E, consideration approval of job order contract to W. Murray Thompson Construction. Whose is that? Who pulled that one?
Uh, we pulled it out. Javier wanted us to pull it out. Javier Arriela wanted us to pull it out because he wants to make sure the budget...
Pondo?
Within budget?
Or?
Yes.
It's from the bond proceeds. If you recall, there was $1.5 million set aside. That was a combination of Brownie Road and Olmito Learning Center. Y'all have allocated three projects for the Splash Pass, which were just under $300,000 each. I mean, there's funds available, but there was still discussion that's...
What does that leave in that? In that amount? Is it about $700,000, $800,000? Or what does that leave?
Well, if you approve this, it's gonna be less than $500,000 because you still have the contract, I mean, the architectural fees that are associated with that.
And we need to bring back at some point the animal shelter because that's kind of been lost in, you know, trying to get these other projects. And so we need to bring that issue back. Now, let me ask you, on that $500,000, can that be allocated? Because the initial agreement was to have Commissioner Hernandez's community center in Olmito basically postponed and applied those funds to the animal shelter.
Correct.
So I wanna make sure that if other projects come up, that we at least earmark that $500,000. That's what you wish to do with it.
Well, y'all haven't officially taken any action on that, so those funds right now are still within the park system. So if you're going to do that, y'all need to take action so we can pull the money out there.
Correct.
And then it'll be tax-supported instead of the parks paying for that debt.
Correct. I agree. We just hope no one forgets.
But if you approve this, you're gonna have less than $500,000.
Okay, well, that's, you see, now, see, now you're going into your amount, as long as you know that because...
As long as y'all know that.
I don't want it, but I think it's very important to get this project...
All right, on the record, okay.
Uh, question. Is a 419 before or after these deduct, the deductions that we have here?
The 419 takes into account two of the deducts that were offered. Uh, I think it's number six and number eight.
Okay.
Uh, one of them was a reduction in some of the supervision. Another one was for owner-provided utilities.
Okay, so the other ones were not taken?
Were, at this point, no, we are not taking those deducts yet.
Okay.
We will, however, continue to work, uh, and if we see something that, a value engineering item that makes sense to take and that we should take, then we'll, then we'll pursue it.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
By Commissioner Benavides, seconded by Commissioner Gatsa. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Carries. Item O, consideration approval of contract 2014-044141-0001 between Department of State Health Services.
Which item?
County Clerk. This is item O.
Oh, okay.
Who pulled O?
I did, I did. I had a question on that. And we can do a two-year contract?
I don't see why not.
You don't see why not?
Yeah.
The question is, can we do a two-year contract?
Can we do a two-year contract?
A two-year?
Yes.
Let me figure it out. What's the word you're talking about? Where's Joe?
Signed off by legal. I mean, if we, well, no. Yes. If yes, yes. I move to approve. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Gatsa, seconded by Commissioner Hernandez. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item S, consideration approval of professional services agreement between Juan Barot for substance abuse treatment services. Commissioner.
Uh, is there a budget? I didn't see that initial on the budget part.
Uh, yes, there will be a budget. Just in your court.
Okay, so there is a move to approve.
Moved by Commissioner Gatsa, seconded by Commissioner Hernandez. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item E, consideration and possible direction to allow Inertia Tour, Inc. to reserve approximately 150 tent sites for three nights. Javier?
Javier, Judge Commissioners, um, we requested to pull this one out just to discuss, what Inertia Tour, Inc. wants to do is they wanna reserve 150 tent sites and then 50 tent sites on another date. Um, we just wanna make sure, we spoke with Dubia and she suggested that we put this on the agenda, just to make sure that we're not violating the, um, what do they call the...
The law?
Well, no, no.
No.
But our policy where it's a sublease.
It's almost like a sublease. So I told him to put it before the court because, you know...
Would it be different than anybody else trying to reserve slots?
Only that they're...
If I went and wanted to reserve 10 slots, would you allow me to do that?
You can rent a tent site for yourself, but if you rent it and then you...
No, no, no. Can I rent 30?
Why not?
I mean, if I'm gonna pay for them, I can rent them, right? I don't see why not. So then what's the difference?
I think because these people are turning around and we're knowing that other people are going to be staying there, we don't necessarily know that they're gonna be charging more for the tent site than the county charges. And so it's a little bit, you know, it's different than just saying, you know, we're going to rent these people 10 slots and they're making it, they're gonna be making this as part of their package.
I think the question is, if you do it here, can somebody else come in and do the same thing next month? That's the question.
And we wanna make sure they're not gonna be charging more for that tent site than what the county charges.
Were they willing to say, I mean, or sign something that they're not going to?
Well, they agreed in the letter that they would not charge an extra fee. All they're trying to do is they're trying to rent these sites, put it in a package for spring breakers, be able to be able to take, I mean, they stay there at the campsite, they take these other tours.
Javier, when was the last time you had 150 tent sites?
Every year.
During that time of the year?
Spring break.
They all sell out?
Yes, sir. And please introduce yourself.
Uh, I'm sorry, my name's Chris Brandreth. And, uh, we're also willing to pay for them upfront with a no refund policy. Uh, I mean, and I'll take...
I don't think that's the issue, really. I mean, I think the issue is just...
What we're doing is we're building on the package itself, where we're giving them a meal plan, we're giving them entertainment options such as side trips, and we're also giving them free cover charges at certain places throughout the island. And it also gets them, the activities that we give them gets them out of the campsite as well, so that they're not there partying at the campsite all day, drinking and so forth at the campsite, and it keeps your campground a lot quieter, okay? And, uh, along with other benefits of them being college students and so forth, it generates for future business as well. If they're happy when they're here, they have a good time when they're here, they're gonna come back in the future and they're gonna rent more.
Well, thank you, but I, I mean, I think that, I mean, that's okay, but I don't think that's the issue with us. I think the issue is, can anyone do this? And your answer is?
Yes.
Yes. Now, the other issue is, once you rent it from us, do we have something in place that prohibits them from doubling up on the, on the tent site? Is there anything in our policy that says, okay, we rent it to them for $50 a day, is there anything in our policy that prevents them from charging $75 a day?
I don't think so, because I don't even think we have anything in our policy talking about subleasing. And this is kind of almost like a sublease.
Correct.
You know, we're renting to him, he's basically gonna turn around and rent it to somebody else.
I guess, Mike, does it really matter to us whether he has the ability to rent it someplace else to somebody else for a different price, as long as we get what we're supposed to get? Is that an issue for anybody?
It's a tour package. That's all it is.
Is that an issue for anybody?
I move to approve, Judge.
All right, okay.
Second.
Right, moved by Commissioner Gatsa, seconded by Commissioner Hernandez. Any further discussion?
One question. Liability-wise, Dubia, does that put us at any greater liability for allowing the sublease?
We're not allowed a sublease.
I just think we would probably wanna have at least a list of people's names. We're not, I mean, our agreement is with them. Right.
Got it. All right, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Carries. Thank you. Good luck. Double G, consideration authorization to execute a license agreement contract between Cameron County Parks and Driscoll Health Plan.
You can do both together, Judge. H is the same.
Double H, consideration authorization to execute a license agreement between Cameron County and Driscoll Health Plan also.
Uh, I brought this up because, you know, if we, if we execute an agreement with this company, it seems that to me that we are encouraging the sign-up for folks with this company. I would rather see something of inviting all the different health plans available out there that could possibly set up and provide, you know, an orientation or an education or invite them to educate, but this is kinda like sole sourcing one Driscoll, one plan and promoting it at a county property.
Yeah, and just for clarification, the reason that there's two items is because that it applies to two different parks. One is Brownie Park and the other one is the Centro Cultural, in case people are wondering why we have identical items.
And I have absolutely no problem with encouraging folks and bringing folks on. I think it's a great idea. I just have a problem with one, you know, I mean, one plan, there's more than one plan available to folks out there that they can sign up on. Uh, they're all competitive in nature in how they, how they operate, and, you know, we oughta open it up for all of the people that wanna participate and go out there and provide those services.
We have something similar when we do our health fair here. We invite not just one provider, we invite several providers and let the employee, it's a true cafeteria, you know, let, let the employee decide which service they want, they want to sign up with. And I agree, I think it's something we should pursue.
Yes, uh, we already have an agency out there that is providing the, it's called Quad County Council Services, and what they do, they assist...
Which one?
Quad County Council.
Right, that's a 501(c) though.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Okay, these are for-profit corporations.
Oh, there is, and that's one of the things that we, we did ask the, the Driscoll Health Plan if, if this was a, if they were gonna profit off this, and I think on their letter it said that this was, this was, uh, it was free, that they weren't, they weren't gonna be charging anything, and they wanted to do the same type of services that Quad County Council is currently doing, and that is assisting people with their Medicaid.
Quad County Council is not a company that sells one particular plan.
Okay.
Quad County Council educates folks to the availability of a myriad of plans so that they can choose the best one that fits a particular family situation or a person's situation. Driscoll is like, you know, Liberty Mutual or Blue Cross Blue Shield. Driscoll has, there's four or five plants in the state of Texas that provide these services. There's Molina, Driscoll, Superior, United Healthcare, and I believe one other one. And, and that's it, you know, and I think that if we're gonna be sole sourcing or recommend, I mean, if they're on county property, if we give them a place to go and set up, we're basically saying, this is our endorsement of your product. And I, I think that we are in a...
Yeah, I think a good idea is maybe having a, inviting them to our health fair, you know, and inviting all the other agencies.
All of them.
So they're gonna be selling these programs or trying to get people to sign up for a, for a charge? Is that what you're saying?
That's one of the things, the questions that we did ask, I mean, are you, are you gonna be profiting off of this? Because usually when, when we have agencies that provide services to our, to our communities and they wanna use our, our facilities, you know, we ask them, you know, not to be charging, that's what our, our members of the community, you know, they can be profiting. They say, no, we're not gonna, this is, we're not be, we're not gonna be profiting. All we wanna do is assist people with their Medicaid, with, I guess, food stands, with chips, with their applicant, with processing their application. But I was not aware that they were...
But all those applications, you apply for those things and then you choose a particular program to go on.
Yeah, I was not aware of that, Commissioner.
Which is Superior, United Healthcare, Driscoll, or Molina. And, and, you know, I mean, if, if one plan is doing it, I don't think they're gonna be recommending their competitor for folks to be signed up on, you know.
Exactly. Maybe what we need to do...
Rather than doing that, just go ahead and open up to maybe several times a year, opening up, have them at a health fair where people can, if they need assistance.
That would be, that would be...
That would be a good idea, you know, and I think that's what we need to do, yeah.
And invite all of them.
You can just invite them to the health fair and, and let the people decide who they wanna, who they wanna choose.
Just for clarification, about having a health fair for whom and where?
Well, we do have...
At the Brownie Road Centers.
At the, at the centers?
At the centers, yeah.
We do have health fairs at the Brownie Road Social Service Centers, at the Centro Cultural, you know, we have health fairs every year, but what we could do is invite these agencies to come and, you know, and participate. The more people that we have there to participate, the better.
All right, so what do you want, wanna do on this? You want a table?
So, is anybody here representing this group?
No, there's nobody here, you know.
I just, I just feel that if I, I would support these two items, I would be endorsing one plan over others, and I don't think that's my role. I think my role is to make sure that people are aware of all the options they have, and then they need to choose which one they want. But to, to authorize and, and execute a license agreement with one particular company is basically an endorsement of that company.
At the least it implies an endorsement.
Yeah, I would, I would like for them to come. I'd, I'd move to table, have them come here and let them tell us whether they're gonna...
Okay, that's on both items?
Yes, sir. Well, I don't know, I mean, do you wanna do that?
Okay, moved by Commissioner Benavides, seconded by Commissioner Hernandez to table for the next regular meeting. See if we can get them down here. Joe? Hello?
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's all right. See if we can get them down here or somebody to address it.
And, and I think that, you know, they're requesting office space.
Yeah, they are.
Okay? I mean, what if the other companies want office space too?
That's why it's gotta be in the community building part, you know, the open area, like they have the little, the little gathering rooms, gonna have to be there, because we can't do that, okay? Moving a second to table, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Carries. Item double K, consideration authorization to roll over operation balances from fiscal year 2013 budgets.
Judge, we had, um, made this request to see if we could roll over these, these budgets, the balances from these budgets from this year to, for next year. Um, 'cause what happens when we submitted our budgets for some of these, because we weren't able to balance, we had to cut them, reduce the, the request. So what we were doing is we were requesting to see if we would be able to roll these over. Um, there's, I think, three accounts that we would be able to roll over. One of them is the, um, let's see, 6641, which is the Beach Trash Program. Um, we show that there's a balance of about $42,000, but Martha's saying that we may have about $25,000 at the end of, at the end of the year. For the Beach Cleanup donations, which is actually 6692, not 6691, we have $22,570.98. Those are donations that we receive for the Texas Adopt a Beach that we have every year. Um, and then the, the last one would be the summer program. Those are the membership or the collections that we, we receive for the summer program that we have every year. We wanna roll that over to be able to start off this coming year's program. That balance was $2,132.
How about the safety program?
The beach safety program, we're not gonna request it because auditor's office is showing that we are, we didn't meet our forecast on our revenues, the $1 extra that we picked up for our expenditures. So we will be, I think it was 20, about 25,000.
Short?
Short.
Explain, Martha.
If you can explain how, when you roll over these revenues in an enterprise fund like this, 'cause they're within the park system, an enterprise fund, how does this explain how that would differ from any other department rolling over unused revenue?
Uh, what's rolled over in these enterprise funds is the fund balance that they would have, so it would be restricted fund balance. Uh, the two items on the park donations and the park summer program, those are donations that they actually obtained during the course of the year. And what has normally happened is these donations are, have a designated purpose, and when the request is not made to roll them over into the new year and designate them as reserved, then they go into fund balance. So the following year, they have to start all over again, regenerating donations, so this will give them a little bit of, of a...
Would you, would you, would you put it into fund balance as unreserved and then back it?
It's reserved.
As reserved?
It's reserved, yes.
And then you, well, once you can do that, once you do that, though, you can back it back out.
Correct, yes.
Okay? Is that for, for accounting purposes? Is that what you're gonna do?
That's, that's what we will do, and that way that they will have that amount of donation.
So really, you, you zero it out?
Yes.
And then you bring it back out as a, as a, okay? That's okay.
As a usage of fund balance, yes.
That'll work, all right.
Move to approve.
Moved by Commissioner Benavides, seconded by Commissioner Gatsa. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Item carries. Triple W, county commission, who pulled that one? Triple W, county commissioner precinct 3 David Gatsa.
That was the addition of the 50 bucks registered.
Okay, that's already been approved, okay. Item 3A, budget amendments, line item transfers, and/or salary schedules.
Judge Commissioners, you have the budget amendments in place in front of you. Uh, the first one is auto theft for the DA's office. That one starts in September. And then you have the juvenile surveillance program. Um, and then you have a bunch of worksheets which also have budget data for the health departments. Uh, these are grants that start in September as well for your approval. Um, you have line item transfers for JP 5-1, Public Works, Commissioner Precinct 4, juvenile programs for the Parks Department, Civil Division. Uh, in Civil Division, we received a notice from Civil to process a settlement, so we are requesting the, there's a budget amendment in there for fund balance, reserved for settlements of $37,500. On the indigent and autopsies, we are out of funds for that, so we are moving $10,000 from professional services to medical and dental, and we will be having to come back to the court with another budget amendment for that as well, because it is out of, it is out of money.
And these, these are all fiscal year 2013 items?
These are fiscal year 2013.
Which is the one we're about to finish.
Yes, right now, yes. Uh-huh. We have none for 2014. Um, then you have a salary schedule for the Health Department and the Juvenile Department for your approval.
Questions? Do I hear a motion to approve? By Commissioner Gatsa. Second?
Second.
By Commissioner Benavides, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
And if I may, I have something else on the, on the budget amendment that I'd like for y'all to consider now that you approved that. The Health Department Trust has a balance right now...
Was it in this same?
No, it's not here. This is a separate, separate one entirely. Uh, the Health Benefit Fund has a fund balance of $600,000 right now, approximately. Uh, we need to add this last payroll deposit for the health premiums, and that's going to be approximately $350,000. So that will bring us to a fund balance of $944,000 as of today. Um, we normally have between $850,000 to $900,000 of claims that post for, at the end of the month, as of September 30th. Uh, so taking that into consideration, the Health Benefits Fund will wind up projected with a deficit balance of about $22,000. And if you will recall, I had mentioned to the court last time that after this last payroll post, that we would be able to, to pull funds in that have been budgeted in the health insurance for all of the departments and to bring up the balance in the Health Benefits Fund. Uh, right now, the Parks has $36,000 available budget still. General Fund has $399,000. Uh, Roden Bridge has $30,000, and the Bridge System has $36,000, which that would give us $500,000 in additional funds that we can put, transfer into the Health Benefits Fund as a claim. So the recommendation would be to, since those funds are already budgeted in all of those departments, to pull in the funds and to pay them over to the Health Benefits Fund to make sure that we do not run that short at the end of the year.
This is your recommendation?
That's my recommendation, yes.
Okay. I had a motion and a second already, and that, that motion was Commissioner Gatsa, seconded by Commissioner Benavides.
I don't have a problem with including.
To include that. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Carries. Claims?
Claims, warrant's number 308042 through 308065, 308067 through 308749, claims 308755
to make sure that we do not run that short at the end of the year.
This is your recommendation?
That's my recommendation, yes.
Okay. I had a motion and a second already, and that, that motion was Commissioner Gatsa, second by Commissioner Benavides, to include that. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, carries. Claims?
Claims, Warrant Number three zero eight zero four two through three zero eight zero six five, three zero eight zero six seven through three zero eight seven four nine, Claims three zero eight seven five five through three zero eight 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 three, Payroll dated September twenty-seventh for one million six hundred and seventy-three thousand seven hundred and seventy-one dollars and ninety-five cents, Healthcare Claims for four hundred and fifteen thousand five hundred and thirteen dollars and sixteen cents. We also have three voids that I'd like to read in. Warrant Number two nine nine five seven five for fifty dollars, Warrant Number three zero four four nine nine for three hundred and ninety-five dollars, and Warrant Number three zero seven one four five for one thousand four hundred and seventy dollars. I have included in the claims I read in the contracts, where at the end of the month, September thirtieth, will be the last day of the month, and that is on Monday. Does the court want to release those on September thirtieth, as the way the contracts read? Or do you all want to release them tomorrow? It's up to the court.
Make much of a difference?
Terms of the contract.
Terms of the contract, thank you.
What were the, the voids were for what, Martha?
The first one, two nine nine five seven five for fifty dollars, is a Parks reimbursement on a deposit, and that one had a bad address on it. The other one, three zero four four nine nine for three hundred and ninety-five dollars, that is a claim from Lexus Nexus for the vendor bill for the same amount on two different invoice numbers. Then we have Warrant Number three zero seven one four five, stop payment has, has been issued. That one is for one thousand four hundred and seventy dollars. The check was lost.
Okay.
Any other comments? Do I hear a motion to approve Claims?
So move.
By Commissioner Gatsa, second by Commissioner Benavides, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, item carries. I've been asked to table the minutes. Do I hear a motion to table Item C?
Some more.
By Commissioner Hernandez, second by Commissioner Benavides, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item D, Consideration and Approval of Proposed Layout and Floor Plan for the courtroom at the Cari Salas Ruta.
I've met with the Sheriff, his staff, as well as the magistrate. We developed this floor plan based in part on the previous floor plan that was proposed a few years back when we did the addition. So it resembles it. The only thing we've done is we've chosen a different location from the original plan three, four years ago.
The Sheriff is in agreement with this, right?
Yes.
Move to approve now?
Second.
Move by Commissioner Gatsa, second by Commissioner Benavides, to approve. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, item carries. Do I hear a motion to table Item E?
E?
E. I've been asked to table it. Move by Commissioner Gatsa, second by Commissioner Hernandez, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, carries. Item F, Consideration and Approval of Fees to be Charged for Services by the Offices of the Sheriff and Constables for 2014.
Commissioner, Judge and Commissioners, I, I passed out a, just a little packet, and you can see on that, they've highlighted the different fees for the different counties that are being charged. I believe Cameron Counties highlighted in yellow, and the other counties are in green. So you can just kind of make a comparison, a quick comparison.
Mine looks pretty yellow all the way across.
And I'd like to let the court know that the last time these, this fee schedule was considered was in 2006.
What did you budget? What, based on what fees?
I budgeted on the current fees.
On the current fees?
Yes.
Okay. On some were high, on some were, were low. Some counties don't even charge for some of this stuff.
That's correct.
Do we need to make, is there a change being recommended?
I spoke, I, I reached out to the Sheriff's Department, and I spoke to Lieutenant Huerta, I believe, I don't, I'm not sure if he's here. But I know that I do have an email, which was attached in the, in the correspondence that I sent out to the court, where the Sheriff's Department is, feels that the fees are, are reasonable at this time.
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
Move by Commissioner Gatsa, second by Commissioner Sanchez, to approve the fee schedule as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item F, Discussion Possible Action Regarding 408, Road 408 in Precinct Four. Engineers, Richard Walker, Commissioner Sanchez. You might want to give us a, I guess, Commissioner, if you don't mind?
Sure.
Maybe a history as to what...
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners.
This road's been on before, and we've talked about it before, and I think I'm glad you brought it back up.
What happened was, last week...
Oh, good.
Last week, was it raining last week? Yeah. I got a call from Ms. Marcy Martinez from Channel Four, asking about this particular road, so I went out there to meet her in the rain, and we looked at the road, and I gave an explanation to the residents and to her, but we've already discussed this before in Commissioners Court, and I invited the residents to come here today. I don't know if the residents, if any of them came. No hay nadie aquí de la, de la Paloma?
This is Romeo's one, that's it.
I guess none of them came, but anyway, we were out there, and the, we have a road that is, is adjacent and connects to Espinosa Road, which is in the county system. Road 408, a portion of it is not in the county system, but it is used by the public. I'll let Mr. Walker explain that. But nonetheless, it's, it's a road that the county does not maintain, because it's not in our system. We have discussed it previously, Commissioners Court. We had reached, I guess, an agreement with the owner of the adjacent property, and I believe the developer of these lots where these folks live, and we had offered to do a paving of it if they could come up with all the materials that would be required and dedicate right away, that we would need in order to do it. And that wasn't done, so here we are again, and just to clarify for, for folks, also, you know, there was pictures of, or video footage of children walking in the mud and the rain, but I did notice Marcy asked them to take their shoes off to walk in the mud and the rain, so, you know, take that with a grain of salt.
Better effect.
Reporting the news, not making the news. Go ahead, Mr. Walker.
A little bit of the history that comes behind this road here is that it's a, it's a public dedicated roadway that falls between two properly subdivided subdivisions, and the road is not constructed on the ground. It is merely just a pathway in which the public uses to go back and forth. It is publicly dedicated through both of the subdivision filings that fall on each side of the road. There's Country Boy Haven number three on one side, and R O R C subdivision on the opposite side. Now, the road is just of public status. It has not met any of the requirements, what the county requires in order to be able to be accepted into our road system. Once it meets those certain standards, then it can be applied for, in order for us to consider accepting into the system and maintain in the future. That's not the case at this particular time, because the road is not improved to our standards.
Question. We, we had not a similar situation, but something that's somewhat comparable to doing something on an emergency basis, where we went in and we determined as a court, it may have been in Commissioner Gatsa's subdivision, but I don't remember, some years back...
No, it was in three different precincts.
Green Valley Farm?
No, it was one, one piece of road in three different precincts, in which there was a school bus that was going into a home for a disabled child.
Yeah, it was something that qualified as an emergency, but...
And we went against legal advice and agreed to it, because we figured that if we had a road from three different precincts, we could get three people to agree.
Right. Anyway, the, the point was, the point is that, that we made, we made a, we made an exception.
We declared an emergency.
Yeah, based on that. Now, I don't know if, if this has similar issues. I mean, I don't, I don't think buses go through there.
Southern's where buses go.
Buses do go through here.
Well, but they have no place to go.
Well, no, they do. And it, can you put, can you put the map up? Basically, Judge, you have Espinosa Road, and then you have a section of 408 where these homes are. Then there's a section of it that's basically private for all practical purposes. And then there's another subdivision in the south that's actually paved. When they paved the subdivision in the south, people started using the dirt road that's really private to come through and then go through this section. What that did is that tore up the caliche that was there. Had the, the people in the south never used that, the road would probably still be in decent shape, but because of all the heavy traffic going through there, it's pretty much destroyed this road.
No, I'm, I'm very familiar with the area. The, I guess, let me go back to my original question. Is there anything, based on what we know today, on the, and that not, I think it's around nine hundred, nine hundred feet, nine hundred and ten feet or so, from Espinosa Road to the, to the edge, not including the property that goes, there's a, there's a road, or a private road, that goes between these two vacant fields? But the road that we're talking about, is there anything in there that gives us the, the opportunity to go in and grade it, bring it up? Because if we declared an emergency as a one-time deal, without acquiring more right of way, just going ahead and, and grading it, laying, you know, crown it, you know, put a, you know, put three inches of compact caliche on it, but it ends at the, where the last, where that last house is. The only problem is, if you have buses, which I've never seen a bus go through that, they do go over on Lial, and they do go over on Espinosa. I've never seen them, I've, I've never had the opportunity to see them go in that way, because there's, there's holes the size of people on, on, as you come further south on, on that road. I mean, you, you need a four-wheel drive to really get through there or go into the field. So I'm, I'm asking from, from engineering and also from legal, is there a way that we can do it, where we can declare it an emergency-type situation? Now, you're going to have to do some kind of a cul-de-sac or something if a bus is going through, to give them a turnaround. Now, if we do that, then, all I'm suggesting is that if we do that, then we're setting a precedent for any other similar type situations that we have, and we may have to decide on a case-by-case basis. So I want to know, is there, is there anything legally that, that we can hang our hat on in, in order to try to fix this problem?
Well, Commissioners, good morning, Judge. The only provision we have, other than if it's a public road, dedicated to the public, and it's not maintained by the county, the, the only other, and, and if they want us, the county, to accept that road into the county road system, the only option we have is that it has to be constructed in accordance with county standards. Who does the construction? Well, either the property owners can get together with a contractor or road contractor, and, and they can indicate to us that there's a set of plans or something that shows that, that that construction is going to meet the requirements, or the minimum requirements of the county. And, and once that's determined, then they can go ahead and start the construction, build the county road to county standards, we'll monitor it for a year, and then we come back to the court, say, okay, we just meet all the requirements, like, as far as construction, and then you accept it into the system.
Because you only got about sixteen feet of pathway, and then you've got, what, ten feet on either side? Or you don't have any right of way?
Well, though, the right of way is there, I think the issue is...
How much, is, is it sixteen feet?
There's sixty, there's sixty feet.
Sixty feet, so...
Of right of way.
Okay. And the road takes up what, about sixteen feet?
No, sir, the, the road has to be twenty-four.
No, no, I know, but what is it now, the pathway?
The, oh, right now, I don't...
Right now, is it around sixteen feet? Maybe twelve, sixteen feet?
Sixteen feet, probably. You...
I have these pictures before we subdivided, it was open by the county, by Mr. Campbell, by the county, I have pictures here.
Okay, can you come up to the microphone and introduce yourself, please?
Can I give you this?
Sure.
Excuse me. This is the existing road before we subdivided, the county opened it up. Once the old opened up, the people started, the county did it before nineteen ninety-seven.
Well, that's a few years ago.
Yeah, that's why we were forced to pave it, because it was open before nineteen ninety-seven. Mr. Campbell had already done it, so those are the pictures, and I have the, the list...
Well, but Mr. Campbell is not, who's Mr. Campbell? He's not with the county, though.
With the county, Country Boy. That's the final list from Engineering Department, from the county. What we needed to do, and there's no road, because the road was already there.
Yeah, but this road, just correct me, this road goes all the way to...
The county opened it all the way?
Correct. Well, when you're saying the county, who in the county?
The Precinct Four, it was Commissioner Valdez. Simon Vazquez was the foreman. I brought some affidavits from those people that worked there, that they had done it, and I brought it to the Engineering Department, and it's just been...
All right. So what, what you're saying, then, what I'm hearing is that the county went ahead, and rightly or wrongly, but they went ahead and opened up this road, laid the caliche all the way from Espinosa, all the way south to...
It didn't get there. There was an error. They dropped the half, their half of caliche, and they have a copy of our check that we paid.
So it stopped at the end?
They dropped it at Lial. They made an error, so they gave us the check back, and there's a copy of the check, because they had opened all the road, because it was a public road.
Oh, so they were on the wrong, so they were on the wrong road?
So they gave me, there's a copy there, Engineering has a copy of the check that gave us back. So we never opened that road. The county equipment opened it, because it was dedicated to all the people, and that's what the plans say when we bought the land. And you can see my field there in the picture. They came in there and knocked my grain down, and ever since the county opened it, you weren't here, but the county opened it, the people...
And this look, this looks farther than, than nine hundred feet, though.
Well, they opened all the way, but they only put caliche to there, because they put the other...
Right, so they opened all the way to where, to where that, that...
That other subdivision.
Los Cypress Road is, and that's, and that's paved. So you're saying they opened it up all the way from Espinosa to there?
Yes, sir.
But they only laid caliche like those thou, those nine hundred feet or so?
Because it was...
And the rest of it was just dirt?
Yeah, they...
Right? Yeah, they just opened that up, and they didn't put any caliche on it, right?
There was a caliche.
For the first nine hundred feet?
Yeah, but yeah, you're right.
There's only, there was only caliche to where the houses are.
Because they made an error, the trailers dumped it the wrong place, so they gave us the check back, and they went back and put it, and we got the money back, but that was a plan to lay it all the way.
Well, you never, you never introduced yourself, I'm sorry.
Romeo Longoria, I'm the developer there.
Okay, Mr. Longoria.
Yes, sir.
It was, I knew who you were, but for the record.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so just one, they, they dumped the caliche in another place, but somehow there's already caliche here.
That's, that's why, Ambutec Engineering, there's the list from the engineering, we didn't have no work done, because the caliche was...
No, no, but who laid this caliche?
The county.
Okay. So I'm, I'm confused. They, they dumped the caliche on the wrong road?
Half.
Half of it, okay, so this represents the other half?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so they only went up to those nine hundred feet, más o menos?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then the rest of it, they just opened it up, but, but that state is a dirt road?
Yes.
All the way to where Los Cypress Street is, or whatever that, that street is there on that subdivision?
But then, like Commissioner Sanchez said, yes, sir, there was no enro there for the, for the farmers, but once that was open, it became an enro, because the county...
Is there, between those two, I think there's, there's a, there's a twenty-acre block on the north end that we're talking about?
Yes, sir.
And then on the, on the, on the next end, I guess, as you're facing San Benito, the lot, there's a twenty-acre block on the right-hand side, and on the left-hand side is another twenty-five acres, or something like that?
Yes, sir.
The pathway that's in between there, that is what you all are telling me is a, is a public dedicated road?
Yes, sir.
Or just, there's nothing there?
No, public dedicated road, and those are the plans that they showed me when they opened the road.
Is that...
Judge, I don't, I don't, Richard Walker has done some research on this, and I don't believe that stretch is a public road.
Well, that's what I'm trying to, that's why I'm asking the questions.
I think you need to ask Richard Walker.
I'm asking, well, I'm looking at engineering, that's why I'm asking the question, is that a public, public dedicated?
That last little map that I, I handed out to you all right there is broken down into three separate colors there. One being the orange color there, which is the, the right of way that is in place, it's said through the two dedicated maps that are filed to record and approved by the county. The center section, which is in red, is reserved to the abutting property owners as per wording on the plat itself.
So it's not, that part is not?
That's a private.
A publicly dedicated road?
Not publicly dedicated.
Okay, so that's where it's the pathway between the, this twenty acres and this forty acres?
That's correct.
Okay.
And the yellow part that at the very end is also publicly dedicated through the subdivision platting of Los Cypress, and that road was constructed by the developer, put in place, monitored by the county, the mandatory amount of time.
And that is a paved road.
And accepted into the road system.
Right, okay.
Because it complied with all the regulations.
Okay, well, let's talk about the, the first, the first section, the nine hundred feet. The other stuff, I mean, I don't know if we can do anything about that, but at least the nine hundred feet. Commissioner, what is it that, that you'd like to do?
Well...
Or what is it we can do, is a better question.
What the residents were asking is for help in, in fixing the road. I told them that we can't take a road into the county inventory unless it's up to standard, exactly what Mr. Walker's saying. They don't have the money to do it. So it would take this court, either making an exception or authorizing a one-time fix, but if we're going to do that one-time fix, I would suggest, at the end of the road, it probably needs to be closed, so people from the subdivision in the south don't go through there, because it's, when you just have five houses using a road, it's going to last a long time. When you have a lot of traffic, big vehicles going back and forth, it's going to diminish that road. And where I got the buses going back and forth came from the actual residents. They're the ones that said, I've never seen a bus, but they were saying. So if, if that really is not a public road in the center portion, then we could close it at the end.
Well, you want to close it at the end of the nine hundred feet?
At the end of the nine hundred feet, but I don't know if, if we could go in there and make an improvement, and if we do make the improvement, are we obligated to continue to improve it? Do you have a...
Yes, yes, you would be.
We are.
Now, Commissioner, uh...
And then you would be making an improvements to a road that's not up to county standards, and now, and thereafter, having to maintain it.[1685.83] So you would be violating your own policy.
Can I bring up one point? And that entire road in its entirety is a crossover road that's utilized pretty much so by the subdivision that's on the south end of the Cipres. That's the one that's got the heaviest population, the most residents in that general area there. So anyone that's gonna be going in the north direction from out of that subdivision, rather than diverting over one road to Lial Road, they're taking that pathway to bring them up to Espinosa Road to continue their, their path on north. So those residents in the south end, Los Cipres, use that road regularly to get from one point to another point.
But they don't have to, though.
They don't have to, they have other ways.
They can come around back to Lial and go all the way to Espinosa and go that way, they don't have to use that road, but it is, it is a shortcut. But Mr. 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 Longoria, real quick question, if you, you said that you'd gotten your money back
Yes, sir.
from the county, so, so you're, are you, are you out any money right now? I guess my recommendation would be, hey, you know, if you, if you got reimbursed, then maybe now you can, you can pony up some money to have the road fixed.
At that time, Judge, it was thirty-something hundred dollars, around thirty-six hundred dollars for caliche. Now, it's fifteen thousand. So we don't have any money, the, the public took it over, I cannot close it because it belongs to the public. And I can't even close it, I've got trash, tires, everything in my property.
But we can, I think, you can close it. You can't-
I was advised, and then that it's a public, there's no-
The portion, we can't, the portion between the southern subdivision and the northern subdivision. Yeah, I, I think you can close it, I mean, we can't stop it.
Commissioner, somebody already gave permission for utility poles on my property.
Well, have, have them removed if you didn't give permission.
It's not mine, it's a public road.
No, it's not.
It's been used for over ten years.
It's not a public road.
Well, I was advised by them, I can't close it, and the utilities went through there, so-
Well, let's go back, hold on.
Let me clarify that remark there, it said in reference to him being advised not to close it, yes, in fact, it said I did tell him, I wouldn't, I wouldn't close it if I were you, because the general public uses that road, so any one of them could come up at any particular point in time and say that they're being denied their rights to use that public access. They would have to come forward and have to claim, or they would have to claim it by prescription as being public. We cannot advise them to go ahead and barricade off a roadway, I would not-
Mr. Walker, didn't you just say that that road was reserved for the use of the landowners?
Yes.
So is it landowners in the south too?
Well, I mean, it-
Or just landowners on each side of the road?
The wording is generalized wording within the subdivision plat. My interpretation of it was for the abutting property owners that would have but up to where that roadway is at.
So, so for instance, in looking at this map you gave us, the first nine hundred feet, that road is reserved for the property owners on each side of that nine hundred feet?
No, the first nine hundred and seventy feet is publicly dedicated through the two subdivision plats.
Okay, so past-
The two newer subdivision plats.
Okay, so so between the two new subdivision plats, this section right here?
That section there still falls under the original subdivision, which was Higgs Reserve.
Which is dedicated to what?
Which they did not dedicate the roads, they reserved them for the use of the abutting property owners.
So, right, so if they're not dedicated, that means he can close them, right?
Well, technically speaking, he can close them, but I, I'm not gonna advise him to close something that's gonna cause problems with the general public.
Well, but we can't advise him that he can't close them either, right? I mean, if he wants to close them, that's his decision. Because we, we, we're not maintaining it, and we're not saying that it's a public road, so if he wants to close it-
That's, that's his discretion, that's solely at his discretion.
So he would be able to put a barricade after the nine hundred feet coming from Espinosa, and then on the south end, right where the pavement ends, he could put another barricade there or, or something, just gives him access, right?
If his tract of land goes up to that point, yes.
Or you could just even put one barricade, the one on the, on the, on the nine hundred feet, at the end of the nine hundred feet, put one barricade there with a sign up on the other side, you know, dead end, or something like that, instead of putting two, two barricades. And that allows him access to his property from the other side.
He would be able to do that.
And and all that is fine, but what are we gonna do, what can we do right now about the nine hundred feet that, that are, that's impassable right now?
That's up to the Commissioner's Court.
Who is, Richard, who is responsible for those nine hundred and seventy feet?
From Espinosa South?
From your point, I mean-
At this particular point in day, at time? It's the, the abutting property owners.
Okay, so-
Because it was never approved to meet our standards for it to be considered, accepted into our system.
I mean, didn't, didn't this come to us about a year and a half ago?
Yes.
And didn't we come to an agreement and say, okay, we'll do the work if you guys provide the materials? Wasn't that some of the discussion?
We came to the point to where there was discussion in reference to the possibility of someone paying for materials and then us doing the work, it says, but I don't think there was ever any kind of agreement.
Okay, so there was no, we just said, okay, this is available, so-
Yes.
I imagine some of those prices might have gone up too.
So it, when you, when you did this, when you approved the subdivision, or your predecessors approved the subdivision back in the nineties, does it state in there who's required to maintain that road?
The developers are always required to construct the road. If they wish to have us maintain it in the future, it needs to be constructed according to our standards.
Okay, why didn't we require him to construct the road at that time, then?
Uh, I don't know, maybe Alex can answer that question.
Morning, um, we don't have any record of, of what agreements they had in the, in the file, but typically, if, they're the ones that are gonna decide. If they bring this county-
Who is they?
The subdivision. If they decide to upgrade it, then we maintain it.
Today, we have a rule in place that if you're gonna subdivide, you have to put in paved roads, correct?
Correct.
When did that rule take effect?
I believe it was nineteen ninety.
In nineteen ninety?
Yeah, and then there was the county policy in ninety-seven.
Okay, so the rule went into place in ninety, but the county didn't start enforcing it until ninety-seven?
The subdivision rules, September tenth, nineteen ninety, they require a private road to be caliche. That's a private road. And then if you wanted to get it to county standards, then the county would maintain it.
Okay, so, so in nineteen ninety, if you had a caliche road for your subdivision, it was gonna be considered a private road, and the developer or property owners were gonna have to maintain that road?
That's correct.
And in ninety-seven, we started requiring paved roads?
In ninety-seven, they just clarified it.
Okay, so after ninety-seven, could you still have a caliche road?
Yes, but it would be private.
Okay, and when it's a private road, who's responsible for maintaining it?
The subdivision owners.
Okay, and this here is a public or private road?
A private road.
Okay, so this private road here, the, the people responsible for maintaining it are gonna be then the residents?
That's correct.
So at the county, we can't do anything to improve that road or maintain it?
Not unless we, they follow the county policy to upgrade the road to asphalt.
Okay, and if we do the asphalt, is what we talked about, that if we got a, the materials donated, then we could go ahead and do the work?
That's correct.
And once we did that, then we could accept it into the county system, and from then on, maintain it?
That is correct.
Okay.
Commissioner?
Yes, sir.
But that road was done before nineteen ninety-seven, that's why they didn't require us to do any upgrade. Espinosa was caliche, all the roads were caliche there. All of those got paved, now that Colonial Project started, they started paving all the roads. So nobody remembers caliche anymore now, but before nineteen ninety-seven, Country Boy opened that road and relayed caliche, and it was approved, that's all was required was caliche, because they, they did not ask for hot mix. If they would have asked for hot mix on that letter from engineering, we were, we would have done hot mix, but that is all was required at that time, before ninety-seven. It wasn't enforced, it wasn't told, if it were told us-
Yeah, but it wasn't accepted into the county road system.
They never did, but I never opened it, those people never did, it was Country Boy. And I have here the, where the commissioners, everybody signed off on that subdivision. Why would they sign off and let me sell lots if the road wasn't up to standards? But that's what the standards were before ninety-seven, that's all I wanted.
It, it was, according to what he's saying is, back then, you could have a caliche road, but it wasn't gonna be accepted into the county system. If you wanted to do a caliche road, you were gonna have to maintain it privately, is what he's saying. So you chose to do caliche, but with that choice-
It was there, it existed before I even started-
Right, okay, well, whoever, whoever subdivided this property chose to make it a caliche subdivision.
But you remember who was the people that opened it with the county equipment or somebody else, and they tore my field out? So that's why I say, you know, the public, the county equipment, when it tore my grain field and told me it was a public road, and from there on, I said it's the county, and now you say it doesn't, but why did the county equipment know? They tear my field that I was farming to make the road, and then they don't even, I don't accept it. I don't know, but it's the commissioner, you all know, I don't know, I, I own public. But that's all, that's why I showed my field, they took my road, they took my field, and then they say now it belongs to you. Well, I was the county, but that's the way they did it before, right? That's all, I'm even without those people, right? I made a subdivision, I have Ambutec Engineering, they're certifying the subdivision, that's all that was required at the time. You leave a road for fourteen years without maintaining it, and it's gonna have holes, they're gonna have holes with babies inside. But if you don't maintain it, that's going, all those roads were caliche, I was born in there. But now we're high-tech with hot mix, and county started laying hot mix in two thousand and three, when I came and worked with the county for Proposition Two, we started laying hot mix. Everything was caliche and oil. You can see Espinosa there, there's caliche and oil. So that's what's standard before. I'm glad we're upgrading and getting paved roads for everybody, but the county has accepted a lot of roads, they cannot be being dedicated, and they're only forty foot wide, right behind my house, and they put them into the Colonial Project, and they paint them, and they put them. So the county can do it, but it's up to you.
Well, the, the Colonial Project is state money, it's not county money.
But for a front road.
I'm sorry?
For a county road.
For Colonial Roads.
But they needed at least a sixty-foot east one, or whatever, now you said it's not wide enough.
Well, the, the section further south than the nine hundred and sixty feet or nine seventy feet, there's only a forty foot.
No, there's sixty foot, there's a plant over there. There's, I have a plant there.
No, no, but I'm talking south of that, the, the field they, that you say that they opened up?
The portion in front of your-
Sixty foot? Can we be thirty, I get thirty?
On your truck?
Yes, sir.
Is there a new subdivision there?
Campbell?
Campbell's is, is, Los Cipres are just further south.
Yeah, there's fifty foot, there's only seventy foot from the other-
Do we have any Colonial money left?
On your truck, on your twenty-five eighty truck?
We don't have any money hiding somewhere? It doesn't qualify?
Now, I, I have a copy of a map here, which is a preliminary, it's a preliminary map from the subdivision file of Country Boy Haven, said number three subdivision. And this is a preliminary map, this is not the finalized map, but there is notations on this map, I assume that was by the surveyor or the engineer that was developing this tract of land. Mind you, this subdivision was subdivided and approved in nineteen ninety-three. And there is indications on this map that this road, this same road that we're talking about now, whether it's the nine hundred and seventy feet that falls south of Espinosa Road, or the continuation of it, this map here indicates the road was not open, and it's, it's indicated and noted on the map itself.
That, that, that's not an open road? Hey, do, do you have any Colonial money hiding anywhere, somewhere?
Yes, sir, that's the Espinosa part, then they opened it back, like-
There is no Colonial funds, and it's not a Colonial.
It's not a Colonial? Hey, I've been there, that's where the judge is.
Or considered a Colonial by the state. Yeah, they have to designate it.
So where does it say not open?
Who is the end? I wonder who did the subdivision?
So, if the, if, if you want us to do the work, Mr. Longoria?
I don't know. I insult the law. The county gave you the okay subdivision, I insult the law. The people are facing us, I don't know, I'm here to, yeah, but the only people that were there behind. I, I have paid an inch here, I, I don't own any property there.
Okay.
The acres road there at the back, that's a farm, that's grass.
Let me ask you this, if they quit, if they stop making payments, do you then own the property?
No, and they're still paying taxes.
So they get to-
There's the appraisal law.
You, you won't foreclose on them if they stop paying?
Why? They don't, they're, they're paying.
Right, but if they decided to stop paying, you're gonna foreclose on them, right?
Well, if they start paying, stop paying taxes, will you all do something to them too?
Yes.
But they're, we're not, they're paying the property, they're good people, they're still paying, even though the road's not being kept up, but they're paying. So, I don't know, it's, it's up to the county, the commissioners can do whatever they want, they're strong. But if they don't want it, they won't do it.
Wow.
Well, it's not a question of wanting, I think, I think we wanna do it, it's just trying to find a way to do it. Yeah, to do it legally and-
I turned it into an engineer, and it was approved by all the commissioners' courts and everybody. So finally, they liked it, they accepted the road, well, that's all I know.
Richard? Summary.
Before you give the summary, is there a policy that requires the developer, landowner, to maintain the road anywhere?
There's, there's no policy that would require them to maintain the road. I guess it would be understood that if they aren't gonna comply with what our requirements are for proper road construction, then we're no, we're not under any kind of obligation to consider accepting that road in the future for maintenance, as to whether they would maintain it themselves as a developer, or they would cut that cost bind between individual property owners. That, that's something that would be determined strictly by them.
And I think that in the very recent past, you know, we brought some roads that are very similar to this to your attention from my office in the Los Fresnos area. We had one that is south of Highway one hundred.
I'm aware, yes.
We have one that is on eight oh three, we have one that is on fifteen seventy-five, you know? I mean, this is not an isolated issue, right?
It's not unique, no.
There's a lot of issues like this all throughout the county, because sometimes, you know, the, the father owns five acres in the front and gives a son, you know, an acre in the back, and then, you know, they think that we're supposed to maintain the road, and you keep telling me we can't go in there, because we don't have a legal right to do so.
It, it doesn't meet our current standards. If we go in there and we start maintaining roads that don't ma, don't meet our current standards, then we're gonna be opening up to everyone, for every road that's out there. Most, the biggest misconception that, that lies out there is that the general public believes that because a road is public and it falls in the rural area outside of the municipal limits of a city, that it falls to the responsibility and the duties of the county to maintain. The only roads that we're obligated to maintain are the ones that we officially accept into our road system, and those are the ones that we maintain on a regular basis.
So legally, we can't do anything for this road?
That would be a question, I guess, that Dovio would answer.
You can accept a donation and fix the road, if you accept a donation of materials, you can go in and fix it for a one, you know, one-time fix. Um, in the past, we have done an emergency, but at, when we did that, it was, we, the county did not expend any funds when we, we helped out or we fixed the road, we just went out and bladed it. We didn't put any materials or, or, or spend any money on it.
So if, if the residents donated the caliche, we could go spread it?
Yes, you could do that, but it would not be considered into the county road system, it wouldn't be maintained by the county.
It'd be a one-time shot?
It'd be a one-time.
And then we should tell them at the south end, put up a fence so people don't cross it? And they could, because it's at the edge of their property, the public road ends.
Well, the, the property owners of the private, where the private road begins, could put up a barrier.
Why couldn't the property owners where the public road ends put up a barrier at the edge?
Because that's closing the road, and that's a public road, that would take some kind of, what?
No, it's only a public road to the edge of their property.
That's correct.
So I'm saying, at the edge of their property, could they block it off?
There's the barrier, you could put up a barrier. Where the, where the public road ends and the private road begins, you could put up a barrier.
But they would need to come up with the money.
To fix the road, yes.
And we could do a one-time?
But it would not be in the county road system, and it would not be maintained in the future.
But legally, we could do that?
Yes.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion that if we're able to get the-
I mean, I, I get a conflict, and I don't mean to interrupt your motion, Commissioner, but I remember when, when we were dealing with that area by the Arroyo in Harlingen. Remember, Dovio? Uh, I brought it to Commissioner's Court, we discussed it, and it was an HOA situation in which they offered to do that, the Cabasos Group, and we were told that we could not do that.
Was it a public road, public dedicated road, or was it a private road? Because I believe that one was, it was a private road in, in the neighborhood, and you cannot, we can accept a donation on a public road, a publicly, a publicly dedicated road to do the work, but not on a private road?
Well, it was an HOA, so maybe that was owned by the HOA, maybe that's a difference.
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay. Makes sense.
You're talking about on the north of the Arroyo over south of, what is it?
Arroyo Estate, no, uh, I can't recall, Richard?
Royal Acres?
Arroyo, what is it?
It's my preaching. The Royal Acres subdivision.
Arroyo Bank, or what was the name?
Royal Acres, I believe, or?
Yeah, the road.
It used to be yours, now it's mine?
Yeah.
Yeah, because I met with the folks, but it's privately owned?
It's an HOA.
Right.
But it's a public road, because they all use it.
Well, but it's not publicly dedicated, is, there's a difference with that, Dovio?
There's a difference, if it's publicly de- dedicated, then we can go in and, and accept donations, do the work, but if it's a private road, we cannot.
And how did this road become publicly dedicated when they did the subdivision?
The new subdivision is what I understand.
So back then, it could be a caliche road, it could be publicly dedicated, but we weren't required to take it into our road system?
I don't know the exact facts of what happened on that situation.
When they changed from caliche surface to asphalt surface, uh- Apparently in nineteen ninety?
You know, the thing is, we don't have to have an asphalt surface even today on a subdivision.
No, I don't, no, but then we, we don't accept the road into our system. No, I don't, no, but then we, we don't accept the road into our system either, because it doesn't meet our standards.
Uh, we have, we have, can we have a subdivision developed without, uh, asphalt road?
I don't know.
No, all roads need to be asphalt.
Leading to and?
Leading to, depending on the, what, the road leading to, if it's a county road, they can leave it caliche, but if it's a new road, they have to be asphalt.
Yeah, but it's, if it's a caliche road, it's not required.
Correct.
Okay. So it's not.
You, you live over there?
Excuse me, ma'am.
Can you come up here, please?
Si pueden pasar, can you all come and introduce yourselves for the record, and we've been discussing this for about twenty minutes now, so thank you for being here. It's all right, it's all right, we just started.
Okay, so, um-
Introduce yourself for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Patricia Soto, and I live on County Road four oh eight, the road we're discussing here. Um, I just heard that she said this is not considered a public road, but, but the police pass through there really fast, whenever they have an emergency, the ambulance go, goes through that road, they have to, when there, when there's an emergency, the, the ambulance, the police, they use the road. So how is that not considered a public road? I mean, I, I need to know that, because you guys are not considering that road to be fixed, but yet it is considered to be used as a, um, an emergency road, as a, for the police, for the ambulance, and for everything else.
Can I, where, where, at which point in the road do you live, on the south end, or on the, or closer to?
Well, depending on, I'm-
Closer to Espinoza?
Closer to Espinoza Road.
Okay, so you live in that section?
On, yeah, the worst part, right there.
Ma'am, it's, what we've discovered this morning, and through other, um, dialogue in the past, is that that section of the road, the nine hundred and seventy feet from Espinoza South, is considered public. What happened is, back in the day when the subdivision was made, at that point in time, we didn't require paved roads. A subdivision could be made, uh, and it could be a caliche road, but the developers of any subdivision or property owners were required to maintain the road. And that's something that kinda baffles me, but that's-
Well, when we bought our, our lots there, we weren't told this. I mean, we pay taxes, and we pay high taxes because we live close to a school, because we, we, that's considered, uh, um, our residential is considered a school zone or whatever.
Well-
Because the schools are there, La Paloma School, La Paloma Elementary, and there's Riverside, um, Middle School, there, they're like, like, maybe three blocks from there.
Your, your taxes, their tax rate is the same for anybody in that school district, whether you live three blocks away or three miles away, your tax rate's gonna be the same, it's gonna go based on the value of your property. But the, the problem here is that even though it's a public dedicated road, meaning the public can use it, it's not in the county inventory.
Then how do you guys expect us to fix the road when everybody is messing it up?
Delvia?
How, how is that, how is that, um, fair for us, just to have, I mean, we barely make it with the money that we make, I mean, I make eight dollars an hour, and I work forty hours a week. How do you expect me to pay, take the, the money that I earn for my kids to pay for the road that everybody else uses? I mean, I need to know this, how, how do you guys expect me to do that? Because I can barely make it with eight dollars an hour. And I'm pretty sure there's other people that earn less.
She, she brings up a good point, I mean, it's publicly dedicated, the public uses it, but we're gonna make them maintain it, and them-
Commissioner, that's just the way the law is, I mean, if, if that road is not accepted into the county road system, the county is not allowed to maintain it and, and expend funds on, on it. Now, if the county wants to go against its own policy and accept a road that's not up to the county's standards, then you can do that, and be, be prepared to, to have a lot of other people coming to you to, to request the same.
The, the property, the, who owns the last lot on the end of that nine hundred and seventy feet?
There's, there's an empty lot, too.
Micaela. There's, on that road, on, from, uh, from Espinoza Road to our, to where the, the last person lives, it's, uh, that's how many lots? One, two, three, four, five, six, those are six lots. How do you expect, uh, for six people, six families to fix the road? And there's like, big holes, our cars are ruined already, and, because it goes like that, I mean, some of those holes are like this big. We can't afford to fix them, we can't afford it, and especially if it's a public road, I don't think that's fair for us to be taking care of something that is public. And now, if you don't wanna put any money into it, then close the road and make it a, a private, uh, road. But, um, then we'll, we'll deal with it, we'll see how we, we can do it, we can fix it, but-
Can we close the road, Delvia? Do we have legal authority?
We can be putting a lot of money to it, because then otherwise, we're gonna be end up homeless.
You can close the road, because any road can be, anybody can come and petition, there's a process to change the, the pro, you know, the, change a road in, in the way of closing it, or abandoning it, or vacating that road. The Commissioners' Court does this quite often, we, we get petitions from landowners, you know, asking the court to close a public road, so you, you can do that. You, it cannot leave anybody landlocked if you close the road, but, you know, it can be done.
Cause the people on the, the, the people in the middle can exit to the south?
I, I-
So you're saying if there's a house, because down the road from the last person that lives there, to, to the new subdivision that they made there, the houses are right there right away. So if the house in the corner, in that corner, uh, starting the, the, our bad road, it's burning, and the other road is getting fixed, how is the, the fire department gonna get to there?
They go around?
Well, let's say, because sometimes they're, they have the other road closed. The other way to go into that room is through, um, La Paloma Road, La-
Lial Road.
Lial Road.
But, Lial Road is done.
Yeah, but, I mean, it's, it's getting bad again, they didn't fix it well, because it's, uh, that, uh, como se llama La Paloma Road? La, no, not Espinoza.
La Cipres, La Cipres Boulevard.
Yeah, Cipres, to get to Cipres, you have to go through either through, uh, four oh eight, or through, um-
Lial.
La Paloma.
Lial.
Yeah, to Lial. Either way, either, those are the only entrance to get to Cipres.
Right.
Okay, we block our road, then you only have, uh, La, what's, yeah.
Lial.
And, but sometimes they're doing roadwork or whatever, and there's no way to go through.
Uh, do they block the road?
No, it's done.
Well, right now, it's done.
It's always, it's, but it's never been closed off completely, I mean, people can, you might drive on caliche, or whatever.
They, they block it to where you turn to Cipres, and, because there's the entrance from four oh eight and Cipres, so they cut it through there, and then they just leave the road, you know, in an emergency.
Well, we, we can, I mean, if you wanna petition to close that road, we can close it for you, is what legal's telling you.
No, we'd rather have you guys help us fix it, because, like I said, our budget is not enough money to, to have that road fixed, plus, like I said, uh, like I said, the police officers, the police, and the fire department, and the, and the ambulance goes through there a lot. And they use, even though they could go through Lial, which is a better road, they take four oh eight because it's closer to get to, to Cipres.
We can't take it in as a caliche road and maintain it as a caliche road?
Or even if you don't wanna do the, the paved road, do the caliche or something.
If you do that, Commissioner, I'll, all I'm saying is be prepared, because you're going to have a bunch of people coming to you to ask that very same-
Well, I've got issues in other parts, but, I mean, right now, this is, this is, you know, they've come to me for help, and I'm trying to help them, but... I don't know, I mean, what else can we do? The, the best fix for this, really, is for, it to get paved, cause once it's paved, we'll take it over from here on out. The problem with getting it paved is we can't use county money to pave it. So if y'all could come up with the money for the materials, we could do the work, and that's what we told Mr. Longoria way back when.
But how much are we talking about? Like I said, I mean, I only earned eight dollars an hour.
What we had-
And I'm missing work for, to come here to this discussion.
What we had done was, we had asked engineering to look at from Espinoza all the way to Los Cipres, so it would be a paved road all the way through, and the cost last year on that was, what, Alex?
Seventy-six thousand.
Like seventy-six thousand dollars in material.
But, yeah, but that was only for the, was that for the whole stretch, the whole mile?
That was for the whole stretch.
Or for just the nine hundred feet?
That was for nine sixty only.
Here's, here's what I'd like to see happen, cause we're gonna, we can be here all morning. I wanna find a way to close the road at the end of the nine hundred feet, this is a, is a compromise. At the end of the nine hundred feet, y'all get a petition to ask us to close it at that end, in other words, right at the last house, we close it. Then as a Commissioners' Court, we, we declare it, uh, and I was gonna step on some toes here, but you declare it as an emergency situation, just to go and do minimum upgrades. That would mean grading the road, crowning the road, and laying a three-inch caliche base on it, and do as much work as you can with the bar ditches, and we go on record as saying is it's an emergency situation, at least allow the, uh, the families to be able to get out from that south end. Not to open up the whole road, not to lay anything, leave it, and leave it to Mr. Longoria to close up if he wants that other side, but we have you all petition us to close at the end of that nine hundred feet, and then we do it as a one-time deal, one time, and that, and we go on record doing it one time. Is it gonna open up other scenarios? Yes, it is, and I think we take it, and if, and if they can, if they can come and display the same need, the same issues, the same problems, then I think we take it up at that point. Your, your point, Commissioner, is, is, is well-taken, you know, you've got a lot of issues out there, but this is the one that, that is pressing today, and so do you, and I just think, and I'm not gonna say, hey, hey, Commissioners, you bring all your roads in, no, I think it's gotta be done on a case-by-case basis, and not because you're here, because I, I suggested that early on in the conversation, to, to do that. Now, if, if I'm gonna get in trouble for doing that, well, I don't wanna do that, and if we're violating a state law, that's something different, but if we're making an exception to our county policy, then we might be able to do that. But if it's in violation of state law, that even if, if we wanted to do it, we cannot do it. So I guess my question to legal is, if we do that, are we violating state law?
You're not violating state law, but what you will be doing is taking on a road that you will be maintaining in the future.
But we're not gonna maintain it, that's why I wanna be able to-
By doing the fix and spending county money, you will be obligated in county to maintain that road.
Well, when you say obligated, the obligation comes as strong as you got three votes up here to do it, correct? That's the obligation that we have.
But you will, you will be fixing the road-
Yeah, but we don't-
And by fixing the road, you're going to be putting it in the county road system that will need to be maintained in the future.
So there is no way that we can do this as an emergency and not accept it into the county system?
If you're going to be using county money-
Correct.
-to purchase materials, then you will be taking on that road to be maintained in the future.
Well, look, let, let me ask you another question, if we were just gonna do that to the nine hundred feet, if, if it's seventy-five thousand dollars to do that whole stretch, have you done an estimate as what it would take to do the nine hundred feet?
Well, Commissioner Garza was saying forty-five thousand.
Well, that's what I was asking, because I asked if that price was for the whole stretch, and I was told yes.
And that's, that's to pave it, correct?
Okay, that's what I thought, so I thought that-
What would it be to put down the caliche? How much would it be if you were just gonna do the caliche and not paving it?
Right.
Cause if it's forty-five thousand to pave it, it should be less for caliche.
Right, okay, and that's what I was saying, that, that the seventy-five thousand, I imagine included the material plus labor and equipment, correct? For the nine hundred feet, and it's not the whole stretch, that's what I was asking.
The whole stretch for, was for ninety thousand, material only, for the whole stretch.
How much?
About ninety thousand, forty-five thousand is for the, the nine hundred feet.
That's what I thought, I mean, cause-
Ninety thousand would be material only for the whole stretch.
That's correct, and that's why I was asking, is the seventy-five thousand for the whole stretch, or just the nine hundred feet? Someone said, no, just the nine hundred feet. Now, on the seventy-five thousand, is that the forty-five thousand? Look, let's be realistic, there's no way, there's no way that the, the, the folks there are gonna be able to ever pay this off. Even if we assess it on their ad valorem bill, it'd take forty, fifty years to pay it off, and that's not practical to do. So what I'm suggesting is if the court wants to do that, Commissioner, I mean, this is what I would suggest that we do, we, we get them to petition off, to close it, and, and I see what Delvia's saying, but again, the obligation would be for this court to decide if it, five, three years from now, well, we want it paved again, well, it comes back here, there's no obligation to do it, it's a matter of, do you have the three votes to do it, or three or four years down the road?
But, but the issue that Delvia's saying is, once we do the work on there, we have to keep grading it, and keep putting caliche, and keep maintaining it.
Well, you only have to do it if, if you've got the support of the Commissioners' Court, a lot of roads out there that don't need it.
If we spend money, county tax dollars on the road, we have to continue maintaining it.
That's subject to, you know-
No, not subject to anything.
No, it is subject to budget, subject to money being available, sure.
Sure, I mean, if the money's not there, the money's not there, but-
That's right, you know, you, the way, the way you, the way you prioritize-
Well, and, and that's, that's what Mr. Longoria was saying, that, hey, way back when, the county worked on it, they should've continued to work on it.
No, I don't know if the county should've worked on it at the time.
But I don't, I don't, Commissioner, I don't know, I don't think that the engineers-
Well, no, I understand.
The Engineers Department has any records showing that work was actually done, that, that caliche was laid by the county. I don't, I don't know the exact, um, circumstances or how that got done, cause they have no records, I'm not saying that it wasn't done, I'm just saying, at this point in time, we don't really, we don't really know how it was done.
Mr. Longoria, yes, sir?
There are some records there, hourly, hourly written, I've, I've seen them in the office, it's there, when the county equipment worked there, they are there, they logged the hours, Mr. Simon Boscas, I saw that there.
So some, someone approved the wrongful spending of county money, is what happened?
That's, I think that's what happened, exactly right, that's exactly right.
Right, but, but, but the, the county equipment did go, there's no reason to, to, you know, that's the truth, they did. And that's why it was accepted, it was an old caliche road, but, uh, they were there, they, they took, they took my field down, so I know it happened.
Well, and you say you have utility, you have utility poles there?
Yes, sir.
I would look into that if I were you, cause they probably owe you some money.
But, is it for the good for the peoples? Leave it there, I'm not gonna fight for utility poles, I don't, it's for the good of the county.
Well, no, but-
They're using the utility poles for the-
But you might get the money you need to pay for the materials.
Well, my parents don't work that-
Can we get back into our swimming lanes here? Um, what is it that we can do? I mean, that, that, that would be my recommendation to do, and I understand that we have an obligation, but the obligation would be subject to budget, and just because you come, not saying you, but because you're here, you come three, through three years from now, saying, hey, we want it, you know what, you know, Commissioner, if we don't have the money and the budget to do it, then we can't do it. So that's, that's the extent of our obligation, that, that's it, subject to budget.
Okay, let me ask you this, um, this money that you're talking about, the community, the county, what is it?
Well, whatever, whatever it is.
Whatever money you're talking about?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, isn't that paid with our taxes?
No, it's really not enough.
But it, some of it is from our taxes, what?
Very, yeah, I mean, like, twenty cents on the dollar.
So we're paying taxes, but we're not entitled to have our road fixed?
That's correct. The way it's structured right now, yes.
On a private road, it's the law.
Well, that's wrong, I mean, then, then you shouldn't be charging us taxes, we're not even entitled for it.
Well, a lot, a lot of people have that same argument, and I, I agree with you.
You know, and, like I said, our, our vehicles are, so one of these days, we were, I was having trouble, I almost got laid up to work because I couldn't even get out of that road. With the, the way it was, with the, all the mud and all the holes, my car got stuck. I have a Suburban, no Suburban, but, uh, I couldn't get out. It took me a while to get out of, uh, ten minutes to get out of there. Um, but, I'm, I don't know much about cars, but when you force your vehicle, it could burn down, or it could, uh, break down or something.
You know, I, I will, I will-
And we can't even get out of there.
I will tell you that very little of the, of the tax dollars that you pay to the county goes towards roads, very, I mean, a very, very small, it's like maybe ten to twelve cents of every dollar that you pay may go to, 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 to build roads, and it's just not enough. So no one, everyone makes that argument, but it's really not a valid argument, I mean-
Like I said, I mean-
It's not enough, I mean, we need more-
My earning for a year is not even twenty thousand dollars.
Well, we're trying, look, we, the, the commissioner and, and the court are trying to find a way to do this without us getting, you know, in trouble by violating a law. I, I think my suggestion, Commissioner, is something that, that might work.
Judge, excuse me? I think maybe what we could try and do is go back to the engineer's office, look for records to see what, if the county did spend some money in laying out that initial caliche.
Have you all gone back to look at records already? I mean, I, I mean, I mean, where else are you gonna look?
There, there are some records there.
We, we have, we have reviewed the files, as I said, and, uh, there isn't anything that you could really, or in my thoughts, that you could say are conclusive, that those monies would've been expended for this particular roadway. There's mention of the general area of La Paloma. So it, it, there's nothing indicative to say that this particular, uh, estimate, or whatever the cost estimate, or whatever the case may have been, expenditure was done for that particular strip of the road. Everything that we've come to conclude by having talked to older, uh, employees that worked that area over there, that are familiar with that road, that have been there since that time, everything that's come back to us has been negative, no, we, that's not one of our roads. And, and that's what our opinion is based on.
How much would it take in actual material cost? Now, when you, when you're talking about the material, is that doing it like six, you know, a six-inch base or a three, three-inch compact base? What are you talking about?
If we only do caliche, six inches, lime-stabilized, and six inches caliche, it'll be twenty-one thousand.
Okay, twenty-one thousand, and, and just material, correct?
Just material.
For nine hundred and some odd feet?
For nine hundred and sixty feet.
Okay. Now, is there, is there enough room at the end to do, and this is really going after it, doing a cul-de-sac? I mean, doing it around so that a bus can turn around? I mean, how's, if a bus goes in and the road is closed, or if it's unpassable, how are they gonna get through? And the thing is, you, you, if you're gonna, if, if we're, if we decide to be able to fix this, you're gonna have to close that road. You're gonna have to close it, because if you don't fix the other part, whenever it does rain, you're gonna have traffic that's gonna bring that mud onto the caliche, and it's gonna ruin it. So you almost have to be forced to close it at the end of that nine hundred foot.
And I believe that the, the, there, I believe, but I, I'd need to check for sure, that the county on its own petition can close it.
We can, yeah, we can do that. So if we're talking twenty-one thousand dollars for materials, the equipment, that's a fixed cost. The labor, that's a fixed cost. So the only thing we're talking about out of money is about twenty-one thousand in materials, which we do have in the budget, because we're starting with a brand-new budget. My recommendation would be that.
We also move some money over, we're getting new road and bridge money for precincts three and four.
That's what I'm saying, there's, there's a, there's a new fiscal year that's coming into place. What I would recommend is this, we close the road at the end of the nine hundred feet, we go ahead and invest the, uh, the twenty-one thousand dollars to, to bring this road up, and we make it clear as part of the record, whatever it is, it's a one-time deal. And then that's gonna, that's gonna buy you a lot of time to work with the, Mr. Longoria, or work amongst yourselves to maintain that. That'd be what I, that's, that's what I would recommend, and that's really, really going out on a limb, because I know what's gonna happen, and I think we're gonna get other folks.
Getting Lane ready to do the same thing.
You know, and that's, and again, it's up, it's up to three members of the court to do it. And if, if we can do that, I mean, I mean, I think that, that the compelling, the compelling issue here is that I saw, I saw, I saw the, the TV, you know, news, and I saw it, I drove out there on Sunday, so I know what you're talking about. And I've got a four-wheel-drive vehicle, and, and I, I struggled getting through it. Uh, but that, that would be my suggestion to the court.
Now, now the, again, consider, once that road's closed, there's gonna be uproar from the south.
Well, too bad. I mean, they can go around the other way, I mean, it's, you know, they spend a little bit more time going, but-
Could, 'cause this one-time fix for six residents, um, should probably endure that road for a long time.
Yeah, it should, I mean, if, if you do it well, that caliche road will last for years. You're talking about five or six thousand dollars per resident, and, and plus everybody else that, that visits that area. That would be my, that would be my recommendation, and I, and I use that in form of a motion.
I think that, I think that before we vote on something like that, I would like for our engineer department to give us an inventory of all the roads that have a similar circumstance to this, and give us a cost of what it's gonna cost for us to do the same thing for every resident of the county that is in a similar situation.
Well, they can do that, but I-
Okay, because they're out there, they call our offices, and, you know, I don't have a problem doing this, but we need to make sure that we have a cost estimate of what it's gonna cost to take care of all the circumstances like this one that are on private, publicly-dedicated roads. Because it would be very unfair to go into a situation where we're gonna end up with a million dollars' worth of need overnight, and that's what's gonna happen here.
Oh, we have a million dollars' worth of need, and I think it, again, everything is subject to, you know, to budget and-
The need is there, Judge, but-
It just hasn't come up.
There's, there's places where the need already exists on current county roads that are not being maintained after this rain events, and, I mean, everything came because of this two-week rain event, you know? The rain event has, has caused a lot of damage to all our roads. There's good roads that now have damage that wasn't there before. There's a lot of roads that are public roads that are private, because they're not in the county road system. And I would like for Alex to give us the inventory of those roads that are used by the public, but are not in the public road system, and then give us a cost estimate.
I think it's a good idea. I think we should have that already. But I, I think that- Yeah, I think, I think the, all, all the rain did just float the problem to the top. It's been there for months.
Years.
No, the holes have been there, but this has made it worse.
It hasn't been this bad as this year. This year, it's, it's the worst. Um, other years, the, um, I guess, we still had a little bit of pave, of payment order.
Caliche.
Caliche. And, um, so the roads weren't that deep, or they weren't that muddy. But now, it's, it's just ridiculous, we can't even get out through, to go to work. It's really hard. Plus, our kids have to walk all the way to Espinosa to get the, the, to get to the bus in the morning, at six in the morning, because my, my little ones, they live at six to ten in the morning. And the roads were really bad. I, I, I had to, I had to get, um, get out of my house even earlier to take them to school, because they ended up missing the bus, because they couldn't even walk through there. And, um-
So the bus doesn't go into the subdivision?
It, it used to go, but since the roads started getting bad, worse, they stopped going through there. But the bus used to go through there to pick up the kids over there in Cipres.
So it would go all the way south?
It would go all the way south, yes. And it would come back through there.
Now, if the road's closed, is the bus gonna keep going in and turning around, or are they just gonna go to Espinosa?
That is, uh, that it all depends on the, on the, on the driver. Because if, if, the driver will go through if the, the road is good. Because when the, the roads were good, the, the bus would go through there.
Well, the, the problem is, though, at the end of the road, once it's closed, the bus is gonna have to turn around.
Well, I think, won't, doesn't, doesn't it have enough space to do the turnaround for the bus?
I don't know, I don't-
Yeah, I think it does.
There's no turnaround space there?
No.
That's gonna be a problem, and then every time the bus turns, little by little, it's gonna go eating away. And then you're gonna have to fix that on your own.
Well, um, well, but then, the, then the road would be better for our kids to walk to the, to the side of, to Espinosa. But, like I said, I mean, before, last year, the year before, I had to fight with the school, um, with the buses, because they, they wanted my, my kids to be, the, in fact, the first day of school, they dropped them off all the way to Cipres, and that's more than a mile for a six-year-old to walk in the morning, in the afternoon.
In trying to keep, uh, Commissioner Garza's request on the, on the inventory, before we plunge in, I made a recommendation that we go and we go grade it, blade it, grade it, just smoothing it out for now, until at the next meeting, you come back with the inventory with, with an estimate about what it would cost-
As a one-time basis?
As, as a one-time basis, is that okay with you all? And just blade it, and at least, at least get the holes out of it.
Yeah, at least it will be-
Oh, I see Martha getting up, that's never good news when she gets up. It's never good news when Martha gets up.
Why let us beat each other up if you're gonna come and shut it down?
First of all, thank God for the rain, okay? But I think that, uh, this also needs to be looked at, looked at from the legality of what the road and bridge fund is intended to be used for, and I would defer to civil to research that and determine if, what criteria needs to be met here.
Okay, well, this will give us some time then. What, can we do this? Can, can we go out and, and, and get a, get a motor grader to smooth it out? Just blade it, make it, make it smooth, make it passable? Can you do that? And then that'll give us some time for, for road and bridge to come back? You can look at that legally, you can come back and, and tell us what the inventory is. Is that gonna be, that's not gonna be that easy to do, is it?
I was gonna say, it might take us a little longer than that, because he's gotta go back and look. Yeah, just to make one final statement about the current status of county roads. Those roads that are publicly-dedicated, not maintained, we're gonna see a lot of this deterioration of the roads, because they were not properly constructed. If you don't have the proper drainage, we, we've been dry for about six, eight months, almost a year, right? We've been in a drought. The soils in Cameron County are very expensive, that means that they're clay soils. If they stay dry, they shrink. They stay dry for a long period of time. Here comes rain, we hadn't had any rain in a long time, and it, it begins to get wet. Well, that soil expands. Once it expands, it opens up cracks, either in caliche, whatever, water starts going in there, and we're gonna see potholes, and they're gonna break up. Even with county roads that are constructed through the subdivision process, we're even seeing that. That's because they have the proper drainage and that sort of thing, but we're gonna see a lot of cracking on the asphalt. And we're gonna have to hit the maintenance crews to go out there and seal those areas. Why? Because if you don't, they're gonna tear up. I guess what I'm saying, we're gonna see a lot more of this deterioration if it continues to rain and/or if it dries again, because those soils are gonna move in, on those county roads. We're very, uh, very urbanized, uh, I mean, we're very, uh, rural sections are very common in the county. So you're gonna see that. If there's no drainage, we're gonna have problems. Just so we know that there's gonna be other roads.
Commissioner, are you-
It's gonna take us a while to come up with an answer.
No.
Okay, but, um-
Are you okay with that? Just blading it, grading it for now?
For now, at least some relief, and then figure out what we can do.
Okay.
The other thing, I mean, if we do, uh, you talked about maybe imposing, uh, an increase in tax to those property owners?
It's like an assessment.
An assessment, but what if we did the whole southern subdivision too? Because they get benefit of that.
I don't know if they're gonna buy into it, but-
Or do they have to buy into it, or do we just impose it?
Because, like I said, I mean, the police and the ambulance use that road more than the other one, because it is closer to, to get to the, to the, to the community, um, down the road. And that's the fastest way, because the other one, it kinda curves in this, um-
Yeah, okay, we need to move on, but thank you for being here. Uh, but let me, you wanna make a motion then, to, to have it bladed or graded?
I'd, I'd move that we blade and grade it for now, and then figure out how we can, uh, do a more permanent fix or a, a better fix.
Are you talking about the nine hundred and seventy feet?
That's correct.
Right, the nine seventy.
Yes, but then, yeah, once it gets fixed, I mean, eh, like he says, it's gonna get whole, but that'll be less expensive to fix for us, in the long run.
Well, I'm just wondering if, I'm just wondering if we need to go ahead and entertain also to begin the, the closure process at the end of that nine hundred?
Well, and that would probably make the blading last longer.
Right. Can we do that? Can we start that process? Legal to close it at the end of the nine hundred feet? And, you know, we'd always open, open it back up if we need to, but for now, close it. So then you get your, 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 your crew out there to blade it, if you can, try to crown it a little bit, if you can, and then just blade it. No caliche for now, until we figure this out. At least that'll get, at least that'll allow you to, to get in and out, okay? I had a motion by Commissioner Sanchez, is that okay?
Second.
Okay. Second by Commissioner Benavides, all in favor, chairman by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Adam Carries, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
And, uh, rest assured that I'll be bringing some roads to commissioner's court, and, and not to take into the county road system, but just to allow for blading to occur.
I think that's-
Dilvia, and if, uh, if you, uh, allow us to do that, I don't think we allowed you to give us your recommendation, you know, so.
Okay. Item H, discussion and possible action to authorize staff to negotiate hiring Dr. Elizabeth Miller for Cameron County Autopsy Services.
Judge, commissioners, um, I put a summary of what we wanted to do on your desk, uh, on the dice. Um, we've had Dr. Miller working with us probably, I think, for about three or four year, three years, since two thousand and ten. She's been on contract with a company called Staff Care. Um, we wanna bring her on board as a contract employee permanently and get, uh, terminate the contract with Staff Care. Um, in the backup, there's a proposal from her as to what it would cost. Um, it would definitely be a, a savings for the county, and she's willing to do it at that price. Um, and we recommend, I would recommend, uh, we move forward with this, and then terminate the, the contract with Staff Care, which is the next agenda item. Questions?
We've been, we've been working on this now for a couple of years, and finally, I think we've come to commissioner's court with a proposal that, that includes, uh, a savings at the end of the day. I mean, we had a budget transfer this morning that involved payment of, an invoice. The staffing company that currently staffs us with Dr. Miller is requesting for an increase of what they wanna charge us, so that that, for the coming year, would be, I think they're asking for how much, David? Like, a hundred dollars?
I would come up to about twenty-six thousand more.
Twenty, yeah.
Based on our estimates.
Based on the estimate that we have, they want twenty-six thousand more than we are currently paying, which would be a savings to the county of about, probably, close to a hundred and thirty thousand dollars with that increase. So, uh, everyone, from the DA's office to all the different agencies, have been extremely satisfied with her work and what she does for the county.
Yeah, we met with the DA, um, probably about a month ago, um, just to run this by him, and he had no problems, so.
So I would move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion second, all in favor, chairman by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, next item.
So that includes the issuance of the termination with the staffing services?
That was for both items?
But you, did you, you included the motion for both items?
Aye.
I think they're separate.
We'll move on it. I'll move on, terminate the agreement.
I'll second that.
I have a motion second to include items both H and I, all in favor, chairman by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item J. Excuse, excuse my voice, consideration, possible action, setting the date, week, our time of regular meetings in Cameron County. We do this once a year, we, uh, look at resetting our meeting times. Is everybody satisfied with the way things are now? Was anybody?
Whatever the court switches are.
You wanna do them in the afternoon instead of the morning?
I don't.
Anybody have a problem with that?
I personally like the mornings because of my, because of my scheduling, it's easier for me to, it's, it's majority, majority rule. For item J.
Where at, Jay?
I'm here at any time, so I don't, I don't care, I can work either way.
You wanna just leave the, the time and the date the same?
That's what we're discussing.
All right, do I hear a motion?
Dan, you had a suggestion.
Maybe afternoon, Wednesday afternoon instead of Thursday morning?
I like the mornings.
Uh, to me, it makes absolutely no difference. Tell me when, and I'll be here.
Well, make a, make a motion to do them on Wednesdays at one.
Okay, I have a motion to do it Wednesdays at one.
I'll second that.
Is there any staff issues with that time, or any, I mean, does anyone have any? Chuck?
We may have a problem with the processing of payroll. Sometimes we run a little bit late. Usually, it's ready by Wednesday at noon, but if there's a glitch somewhere, or if there's a holiday, or the time is requested early, you know, it may put us in a little bit of a bind.
And the reason I say Wednesdays...
Well, I mean, we can approve it, though, subject to you getting to take care of the glitch, right? I mean, if there's a glitch, or if there's a delay, we can say, hey, we approve it.
Subject to you.
Subject to you taking care of it.
Right, and it would get presented at the next meeting.
You're never off more than $100,000.
The reason I say Wednesday instead of Thursdays is there's been conflict sometimes with Thursday meetings out of town in Austin for different things.
Well, today, you know, we had been...
There's a text-out meeting.
We had been requested to be in McAllen at the text-out meeting at 9:00 this morning. That's why I think Mr. Sepulveda went and did the presentation on behalf of Cameron County. A lot of the meetings that are... With that, I get involved with that particular one, and those are always Thursdays. So that would be helpful in that respect.
All right, I had a motion a second for Wednesday at 1:00.
Judge?
Yes?
If I could interrupt, we already have a conflict in that we have the hazard mitigation group that's supposed to meet here in this room, when your next meeting would be. Also, we had scheduled a presentation for the following day during Commissioner's Court in the morning, and the consultants already booked airfare stuff.
This is starting January.
Well, this will be... Oh, in January, not in October.
Right.
Okay.
All right. That's fine. Okay, all right. Had a motion a second to move the meeting to Wednesdays at 1:00 PM. Do I... All in favor, sitting by by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Adam Carey's. Item K, consideration of... This effective January 1st?
1st.
Item K, consideration of approval or request for property tax abatement for San Román Wind LLC, subject to negotiation of a tax abatement agreement. Frank?
Judge and Commissioners, Sergio Trevino is here representing San Román Wind. It's a company proposing a wind power electrical facility. We provided a copy of the tax abatement application in your backup. If you have any questions for me or Mr. Trevino, we'll try and answer them.
Good morning. As Mr. Bejarano mentioned, my name is Sergio Trevino. I'm here on behalf of San Román Wind One. We are a wind energy development company. Initially, first, let me thank you for taking some time this morning to allow me to speak. I also wanted to point out that this is a unique situation for me. In the industry that I work in, it's pretty rare that we get an opportunity like this. I'm from the valley, born and raised here, and it's rare that I'm able to come back and present a project with the kind of benefits that it has here in the area where I grew up. I wanted to make one point of order here, or not point of order, but clarification, I think, on what the nature of our request is. In December of 2012, the court approved and/or adopted guidelines and criteria for tax abatements, and that creates a two-step process for how those abatements are approved. Initially, we, the applicant, files an application. County staff is allowed to review that application for completeness and to make sure that we comply with a minimum requirement of the abatement program. At that point, county staff is not allowed to discuss the project further until there is approval of consideration of the abatement by the commission, by the Commissioner's Court, and that's what we're here for today, is just approval. There is no tax abatement agreement in place with staff. We have not discussed any abatement agreement. That would be discussed upon approval of consideration today, and at a later time, that agreement would be presented to the court for approval of the agreement itself. In addition, nothing that is done today would obligate the county or yourselves in any way to grant an abatement or any other kinds of incentives. And if I may, I was just gonna give you a little bit of information about the project briefly, and then I'll be happy to take any questions that you may have. The project is gonna be between 40 megawatts and 100-megawatt capacity project. It'll be located between Port Isabel and Los Fresnos, just north of Highway 100. We've been developing the project for approximately three years now, and during that time, we've done quite a bit of work. In fact, we've essentially completed all of the physical work required to get the project going. That includes collecting almost three years of wind data, which is the key impact or key factor for any wind project. We've also leased all of the land that's required for the project infrastructure. We've conducted extensive environmental and wildlife engineering and transmission interconnection studies, and have completed all of those. And so now, this is a very mature project. We're in the final stages, and really, what we're doing at this point is sharpening our pencils on the project economics. Some of the project benefits, during construction, the project will bring approximately 100 jobs. Could be a little bit less if we go with a smaller size, and a little bit more if we go with a larger size of the project. Those are only direct jobs created by our contractor. In addition, the contractor will subcontract some of the work out, which would create additional jobs. The payroll that will be accounted for by the contractor is somewhere in the range of about $2 to $3 million during that time. We're targeting construction to begin in December of this year, and then carry on into next year with the project fully operational and commercially operating by November. At that point, the project infrastructure will account for approximately $50 to $130 million of improvement in the county, and I think it's important to note that this is located on parcels that, right now, the county accounts for about, or signs, an appraised value of about $1.7 million. So this is orders of magnitude more than what the property is currently worth. It would also provide millions of dollars in school taxes to the local school districts, and some educational opportunities as well. We've been discussing that with the two school districts in the area. Point Isabel ISD has even supplied, excuse me, a support letter for the project. Some of you may be aware that a couple of years ago, TSTC and Harlingen created a wind energy technology program, where they're training local students in how to operate and maintain wind energy projects. So there are some educational opportunities there. In addition, some of the permanent jobs that will be created by the project, somewhere between five and 10, again, depending on the size of the project, some of those permanent jobs could be filled by some of these students. Obviously, we can't commit to anything ahead of time, but the fact that they're being trained here locally, that they know the area, and that they will know the job requirements will be extremely helpful. And then, the Port of Brownsville, I've met with them, and they have indicated that they have capacity to receive and warehouse all of the turbine components that would be delivered. We are working with turbine vendors to work that into the turbine supply agreements, and we hope to be able to do that. It would really be in the project's best interest, and it would be another benefit to the port. And then finally, I would just like to point out that this would generate somewhere between about 10 and 30, enough electricity for about 10,000 and 30,000 homes, while producing no CO2 emissions, saving tons of CO2 emissions every year, and using absolutely no water. I know that somebody mentioned earlier that we're in the middle of a drought. The valley needs electricity, but doesn't have the water to afford to be able to use that electricity for conventional fuel sources, and so this is a huge benefit. And so just to address the question of the abatement and why we're here in the first place, it's estimated that between one in six projects in development will get built. That means that five out of the six projects that are being developed don't get built. In other words, this is an extremely competitive industry, and what makes the difference ultimately, like it does in any other industry, are the economics. And the projects that we're competing with today are approaching counties where they are located for tax abatements, and they're receiving tax abatements. And so when somebody compares our project to the other five projects that we're competing with, having an abatement in place will make this project much more attractive and will increase the possibility that we're able to bring the project here and bring those benefits. And so just to close, I wanna remind you that this is only for approval of consideration of the abatement, and I wanna thank you again for your time to be able to discuss the project.
Thank you, Mr. Trevino. Appreciate you being here today. Any questions?
How close in proximity would this be to the area that we would be considering for the second causeway?
The second causeway will run, itself will run north of the project area by several miles, approximately five to 10 miles north, and there's a road that would connect it to Highway 100. I know that there are multiple options for where that road would be located, but in any case, if that road were to be near or even through the project area, there's no reason why that road wouldn't be able to go through there. The project, each turbine, including the roads that connect it to the next turbine in the string, only uses about 3/4 of an acre. Even in its largest size, the project would only have about 50 turbines, so even though we've leased a few thousand acres, we will ultimately only use about 50 acres of land, leaving everything else to be used by the landowners for whatever they currently use it, and available for construction of roads or whatever other infrastructure the county needs. So there should be no impact.
Okay. And I guess my concern only is that this is a project that the county and the RMA have had in the works, and I would not want anything to jeopardize that.
Sure.
That's all I have to say.
I think that I've had some concerns called into my office, and I have purposely not wanted to visit with you, because you were in this process with Mr. Bejarano, and I didn't think it was appropriate to me, for me, to meet privately with you. I wanted to make sure that the discussions occurred in open session. That way, everyone can hear exactly the same thing, and there's no questions associated with this. But I know that you and Fish and Wildlife local offices has expressed a huge concern to us. The validity of the concern, you know, I cannot measure. That's something that they would have to do. You know, they have issues with migratory paths, they have issues with electromagnetic fields, they have, you know, and I mention those because those folks ultimately will end up having, you know, issues brought to us individually. These towers are gonna be 497 feet high. There are some concerns at the county airport, at which we have on the agenda, because we've got some projects that are upcoming to be considered for, that have expressed concerns about the change of the flight patterns that would need to be, according to our presenter here, would be improved, according to Texas Aviation Division, would be degraded, depending on what position you have in looking at it. But we have to remember, you're proposing between 40 to 100 windmills.
40 to 100 megawatts. The windmills, the wind turbines themselves, would be a minimum of about 20 and a maximum of 50.
20 to 50. These are structures that are about 497 feet high. Okay? Is that correct?
We're looking at closer to 499, but you're in the right area.
499, 500 feet. Taller than a football field. Yeah, a little taller than a football field. But football field... Once you get into those airspaces, and I've had a conversation months ago with Sergio, you know, he was telling me that there could be things that would improve the approaches to the airport. In conversations with the current FBO operators at that airport, and that's another item that we have here on the agenda, the current operators have a huge issue with airspace and the project. And I bring it before you just to make the court aware. I'm not taking the position saying for or against. I just wanna make sure that the court is aware of these concerns that they've brought to our attention. We have one project that we'll discuss in executive session because of the sensitivity of the project, you know, that has been brought to us, that has a concern with us restricting the current available airspace out there with these towers. There's gonna be more. I received yesterday two more, well, one individual with two more concerns in regards to this particular project. And, you know, I wanna make sure that the court is aware that, you know, there's some issues out there. Some of the landowners are personal friends of mine, you know, and I told them everything would be taken into consideration, and, you know, we need to look at the benefit versus the mitigation that will occur in regards to this. So FYI, you know, we can expect some issues to come up. The FAA, we play some calls to. FAA, according to you, has no issues with it, but a current ex-employee of FAA has a huge issue with... No, a current non-employee that's retired from FAA, that, you know, we've had some information from, is recommending that this project not be done, because there's some major issues with, again, the airspace associated with this. So, you know, it's a point of view from different folks, and, you know, we're gonna have to, at some point in time, consider whether this court wishes to proceed with this. You know, that's up to the court.
Well, I'd love to address both of those issues. I appreciate you bringing them up. First of all, I would just like to, again, mention that we will have opportunity to discuss all of these issues. This is a preliminary hearing, and there will be more than enough opportunity to discuss all of this, and we would be glad to discuss all of this in detail with the county and with county staff. Now, mentioning, moving to the Fish and Wildlife Service that you mentioned, you know, this is, these are issues that we've studied for over three years now, or for approximately three years now. We've conducted bird surveys and done other wildlife studies in the area with very experienced consultants who have worked in the valley for over 20 years. We've complied with the Fish and Wildlife Service voluntary guidelines for wind energy. There are a few other industries that voluntarily do anything with Fish and Wildlife Service, but we've complied with all of those guidelines. We've met with Fish and Wildlife Service multiple times, and it's important to keep in mind that there are other projects on the Texas coast that exist already. They've been there for several years now, and there are other projects that are being proposed. In fact, just down the road in Willacy County, there's a couple of projects. Now, I realize that Fish and Wildlife Service mentions that this is a migratory bird pathway, but those projects have been there for about a year, maybe two years now, and they're really not that far away. They're maybe 15, 20 miles away from where we would be located. And in addition, I think the last point that I would make on that is, we need to keep in mind how many birds are actually struck and killed by wind turbines. It's estimated that somewhere around 550 million birds are killed annually in the United States. About 60% of those are killed by buildings. Another 10% are killed by cats. About .01% are killed by wind turbines. So these are extremely small numbers, and ultimately, this project will be a benefit to all bird species and all animal species. The biggest threat beyond question that all animals face is climate change. The degradation of their habitats as water level rises will eliminate the habitat that they need to stay alive. These kinds of projects will allow that to not happen, and so it will keep that habitat in place. Now, as far as the issues with the airport, this is something that we were aware of a long time ago. We hired a consultant that we paid significant amounts of money to study this, and then we approached FAA. They studied the project for nine months, including having an open public comment period for anybody to raise their questions about the project. They notified all of the airports in the area. They notified any local airmen who want to be notified, who tell FAA that they want to be notified about impacts. And ultimately, they didn't receive any objections or any statements of concern. They analyzed the project, and they said that it does not pose any hazard to air navigation. I am not sure about the project that's gonna be discussed in executive session. Obviously, that's something that's confidential, that I'm not aware of, but what I can say is that FAA has studied this at length, and any type of aircraft that wants to operate in the area can operate in the area. Ultimately, we're talking about turbines that are gonna be spread apart by about a mile.
Didn't that study show that the air patterns had to be changed?
It did not. The...
What was the recommendation?
FAA's recommendation is that we don't have to change anything. Now, we...
The visual approaches to the airport had to be changed. The thrust and power and the rate of elevation of planes had to be increased to be able to accommodate the tower structures. Was that not part of that document?
So FAA determined that there is no hazard air navigation, and that no operations at the airport have to be changed. In our internal study, we did notice that some, on approach to the airport, some planes would not be able to drop as low as they normally do. It would change it from, it would add about 50 feet to planes that are coming in at about 500 feet. It's not a huge change, but you're correct, that we did notice a change, and we offered to...
I wanna make sure that the cherry coating is taken off. There were some concerns expressed in your internal document. It's a public document, or at least it was to me, so it becomes public, and I wanna make sure that the court is aware that there are... I mean, at your suggestion at our first meeting, you recommended to me that you would help us with FAA to change the patterns of approach to accommodate your project. Was that not...
We identified that there would be, that there would be some impacts, and we...
So let's make sure, yeah, let's make sure that everyone here hears the same thing that I was told a while back.
Sure, absolutely.
Because, you know, I mean, we need to be as transparent and open with these projects as possible to make the best decisions, you know? And again, you know, I'm not opposing anything, I'm just saying, everyone needs to hear the same information. Legal has not had an opportunity to see any of those documents, right?
No, I started dealing with it once we get to the agreement.
Yeah, okay. So I wanna make sure that we're all on the same page, and everyone hears the same information, and understands that there are impacts. I'm not an expert in aviation, and I told you that. The people we rely on for that are the people that we deal with and that have been partners and invested with us at the airport, which is Texas Aviation and the FBO. And they have their set of concerns that they brought to our attention with your documents.
I fully understand that, and I agree with you, and I think the distinction I would like to make is that the only legally valid comment that's been made on the project is from FAA. Now, we did discuss this, and you're right, that we did identify that there would be some impacts. They would be very modest impacts, but in offer to the county to not affect the airport, we paid our consultant additional money to come up with a way to actually improve operations at the airport, and they're able to do that. They would allow planes to come in and drop to an even lower level than they're currently able to do, so they get an even better view of the airport. Now, we don't wanna tell the county how to use their money, but we'd be happy to devote some of the money from the abatement to providing that to the county, and that would improve things.
Yeah, and we're getting...
As far as Texas, I just wanna point out that they had an opportunity to make any claims that they wanted to at FAA, and if they were this concerned about it, they really should have said something to FAA, but they didn't. That, to me, indicates that...
Well, it kinda went unnoticed for most people, to be honest with you, because I, you know, I mean...
Texas is the Texas Department of Transportation. I think this is directly in their sphere.
Right.
I don't think it was unnoticed by them.
Well, first, our FBO operator, it went unnoticed, because he doesn't recall getting a notice on this public comment period.
Notice was sent to the county, and I can check on this, but I believe it was sent to the FBO as well.
Okay. Okay. Again, I just want to make sure that everyone gets all the information so that we can base our decisions based on everything we have that is available, you know. Whatever occurs, occurs.
Absolutely, and, you know, we're happy to share that information. I believe I've provided copies of that study to the other, to the other members of the Commissioners Court. And if they haven't had a chance to review that, I'd be happy to provide another, another copy.
So, I guess what we have to decide right now is whether we want to move forward to allow him to negotiate. That doesn't mean, though, that at the end of the day, when it comes back, it would be approved.
Correct.
Well, really, based on what I've heard is, you know, why waste a lot of time? What I'm sensing, let me ask a couple of things. One is that the tax abatement, let's forget the monetary aspect of it, okay? Let's forget that for a moment. The, if you wanted to relocate, or let's say, set up shop where you're talking about regard, forget the abatement, okay? It's not on the table. Would you be able to do it without county approval?
Yes, sir.
You can, right?
Yes, sir.
So, you can do it whether you get the abatement or not, if there was a will to do that, correct?
Legally, yes, actually.
Right, okay. So, there's nothing we can do to stop you, there's nothing we can do in terms of legally stop you, as long as you meet all the regs and FAA and whatever it is. The only issue that's before us here is whether we're going to grant and, or allow you to proceed in developing some kind of a tax abatement agreement at some point, correct?
Correct.
Now, if the tax abatement agreement, let's say the court decides today, right now, you know what, Frank, don't even, looks like we're not gonna go there, forget about it, you still have the legal right to just, in lieu of not getting the tax abatement, to move forward.
We do have a legal right, I think.
Right?
We can't ignore the practicalities that...
I know, but I'm saying, really, I mean, if everyone was flush with money and you didn't need the abatement, you needed the ad valorem tax break, you, you would, you could set up again. So, really, us approving a tax abatement is just giving you a financial incentive to come here.
Correct.
But you can, but without it, you can, if you decide to forego the financial incentive, you can still come and do this. Is that correct?
We can attempt to do so, sure.
They have to go through the process, okay? They can't...
No, no, I'm talking about the tax abatement issue. If you take that off the table, you can still go, yeah, there's nothing that we could do short of maybe demonstrating that it's gonna have some kind of a negative impact to, you know, our airport or the causeway or something. Even then, there's no guarantees that we're gonna prevail. Is that correct?
As I understand it, that's correct.
And I agree with you. I think, I think the abatement is just a financial incentive for you all to come, but if you don't get it, you want to say, "We're gonna go anyway," you can still do it legally.
Legally, correct.
Correct, okay. So, now the question is, knowing what we've seen and what we've heard, but there's already concerns out there that have been mentioned by both Commissioners. I don't see how you are going, your company is going to mitigate those concerns. I don't know how, and if, and if there's a sense that you're not gonna be able to mitigate the concerns, then why make him or the company jump through hoops and hurdles to get this when at the end of the day, you know, say, "Well, we don't want this because of A, B, C, D, and E." So, that's my question, I mean, that's my point right now to the rest of the court. You know, I think, I think that's where you were leaning, like, what are we doing here? If there's already a sense that we don't need it, I mean, not that we don't need it, that there's gonna be a negative impact in different arenas, then why even make you jump through all this? That's my question to the court, really.
Sure. And, you know, I think we're here because this is, this is the work that we do, so it's absolutely no burden on us to jump through any hoops and to discuss this with the county.
Now, you've never jumped through ours, though.
Well, that may, that may be the case, but...
No, and I'm with you. I just want to make sure that the court understands too, that even if we decide not to vote on this, your company is gonna say, "You know what, we're gonna go down there anyway. It's a good location, the wind, or whatever it is, it's a great thing." So, we're not gonna be able to stop you in terms of legally unless there's some really overwhelming issue that we find. And of course, you know, and the consultants, excuse me, the consultants, yeah, you can get a consultant to tell you anything you want, depending on how much you pay them. I mean, that's, so, you're gonna have a consultant that's gonna say, "Oh, yeah, no, not a problem, not a problem." Somebody else on this side's gonna, same thing, say, "Yes, there is a negative impact."
Well, now, the consultants, especially on the FAA side of things, have been borne out by FAA's own findings, and they are ultimately the arbiter on anything having to do with airspace. And so, I think we can, we can rely on that to say that it's been, it's been accurate. The impacts, I think, would be quite modest. And in terms of mitigating those impacts, there are absolutely options available. And I think it would be in, it is definitely in the county's best interest to have this project come here. The property that we're talking about right now generates almost no revenue for the county, and it would generate significantly more revenue for the county if we're there. It would also provide electricity...
Well, not if you get a tax abatement, it ain't.
It would still generate much more than what it currently does.
How? Oh, 'cause you, only, I mean, but not for us?
No, no, it would generate, even for the, even for the county. The level of the abatement, we haven't discussed, that's something that would, we would like to discuss in the future. It, it wouldn't necessarily be a hundred percent abatement, but in any case, it would only be for ten years at a maximum. That's the most that law allows. And so, there would absolutely be tax benefits to the county. And there are also benefits to the EMS taxes, to water districts, to other aspects of the county. And as I mentioned, this, this offer that we made to the county airport is absolutely still on the table, and that's not something that we're, that we're retracting, I think. These are all issues that can be dealt with and that should be dealt with as we move forward through the process.
Well, I just, again, I mean, based on what I've, what I've heard, I just don't know if, if it's something that, I mean, if we don't get to this, then it's a moot point. Discussion's over. And I just don't want to go through a whole process. Frank's got a lot of stuff to do and go through all this process, and at the end, it's gonna come back to us, we're gonna say, "No, forget it. We're not gonna do this because of all these other issues." And I'm trying to save you some time and trying to save our staff some time. If we're not gonna go, if we're not even gonna consider it, then why even, why even go there right now? That's all I'm asking. I mean, I don't want to waste our time or your time.
No, I, I understand that, and this will take some of our time and some of the county staff's time, and that's absolutely true. But I will say is that we simply cannot ignore the practicalities. We do not operate in a vacuum. We operate within a competitive market. Our company is extremely experienced. We've developed over two-thousand-seven-hundred megawatts of operating projects. That's about twenty percent of the wind energy capacity...
How many do you operate today?
We do not operate any currently. We're a development company.
So, you just package and then sell, or how does that work?
We package the project and then utility might, might own and operate the project for the long term. Our expertise is in development. It's a very different proposition to actually own and operate the project over the long term.
You basically put the deal together and then sell that to a company that owns companies like that?
That's, that's usually the way that it works. Yes.
All right. Any more discussion? Okay, I need to hear a motion, one way or the other. I make a motion then, that we, that we approve the request and have them move forward with it. I would suggest in the interim that you provide whatever, if you haven't already, all these agreements that you have, or these, these letters from, that you claim you had from FAA and from Tech Dot and everybody else. I think that, that bird issue, I think that migrating bird, I think that's important. I think somebody need to come up with something that is going to mitigate that and just see where it takes us. So, that's my motion.
I'll second the motion.
Second by Commissioner Hernandez. Any further discussion? All in favor, same by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm gonna abstain on voting, because I don't feel like I have all the information that I need to. And I think that there's, there's more out there that we need to look at, even though it's negotiation, you know, I'd hate to put our staff to work if, you know, I mean, there's issues.
Well, we can do it another way. We can wait for the information before you put them to work.
Table.
You know, I can, I don't have a problem with that, but we just have to, you know, get off center and...
I'll vote nay since we don't have the information and I don't want to make, I don't want to vote not knowing everything.
Okay.
I'll vote nay.
All right. So, I had a motion, a second, all in favor, so that's... Who voted yea?
I voted yea.
Yea?
I'm gonna go...
If you want the information, we can wait until...
Let's wait for the information.
Okay, so then, let me, I'll retract my motion to pass, and let me have a motion to table it. Pending additional information, Frank?
I support that.
Well, thanks. Okay, so then, just so we're clear, what information is Frank gonna need to ask for from the company to bring it back?
Well, that's, I think that's really, we can provide any information that the county Commission wants to see. I think that's, that's for you to tell us. We've provided information on the FAA impacts, and I think that's, that seems to be one of, one of the major concerns. We're happy to do that, and really, any other information on the project that you'd like to see.
Okay, well, I think, I think the FAA impact is important. Do you have any other, any other, any other type of correspondence?
U.S. Fish and Wildlife correspondence?
Fish and Wildlife, U.S. Fish and Wildlife?
You said you had meetings with them. Is there any exchange of correspondence or anything?
We have had meetings with them and we do have some correspondence.
Yeah, that would be great.
Okay. I would suggest, Frank, that you compile this information, and I would get with Commissioner Garcia, this is in his, his area in his precinct, and then just, you know, get, you know, get with that. Is that okay?
We'll bring it to the Commissioners Court.
All right.
I think maybe even a letter from the RMA is saying that they have no problem with the fact it's gonna be close to the new causeway.
Good.
Okay.
You know, just to, just to give you a little bit more ammunition, maybe a little bit more ammunition to either pass or yea or nay.
Okay. So, okay, so then, do I have a motion to table?
So moved.
By Commissioner Hernandez, I have a second.
Second.
By Commissioner Benavides, all in favor, same by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item tabled, and Frank, we're gonna wait for you to bring it back, okay? All right.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Oh, if, I want to, I want to, let me go back real, real quick. I'd like to reconsider the item on the time and the day. I'd like to set that time for 1:30 versus 1:00 to give people opportunity to get back from lunch. So, Commissioner Sanchez, you know, could you, could you go ahead, I guess, and ask for it to be brought back?
Yeah, make a motion that we revisit and make, make it a 1:30 meeting versus a 1:00 P.M. meeting.
Okay. Commissioner Benavides, you okay with that? Okay, moved by Commissioner Garcia, same by Commissioner Benavides, to reconsider to 1:30. All in favor, same by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, item carried, so the meeting time is now Wednesdays at 1:30.
That way, we can give, you know, Martha thirty more minutes.
Thirty more minutes.
No less.
No, for payroll.
Just thirty minutes.
Okay, item L, discussion of possible action regarding the possible redesignation of funds previously designated for the part-time second auditor position to be used by the constable's budget for ammunition and/or supplemental pay for officers.
Judge, can I ask, would that be held for a minute? And I'd like to ask...
Can it be what?
...item passed for now or set aside for now? And we visit item N before that one? Before L? Item N?
Okay, all right. Let me go to item N. Consideration approval to re, yeah, because if that one doesn't happen, the rest of it is moot.
What does ammunition have to do with that?
Now, we're about to find out. Yeah, everybody's passing the buck over here. Consideration approval to reclassify four slots from the Constable Department Precinct Two by Commissioners Court and to be adopted by the Civil Service Commission. I thought that was yours.
Well, I thought it was too, but it's...
It's not you?
Let him do it.
You put it on, but you want him to do it?
Yes.
All righty, you're on.
I know that there had, this is, this is pertaining to the, to the matrix that we had previously discussed, and we were going to wait for a response from legal and civil service. I know Arnold is here, see if he would like to address the issue.
We, this is Juan Gonzalez with legal. I looked at the issue of any fair labor standards, salary issues or exemptions being impacted by what the Constable of Precinct Two wanted to do. And I find there is no legal issue or illegal problem concerning fair labor standards issues because we're not gonna be changing these people from non-exempt to exempt from overtime, and so, they would be continued in the same hourly classification that they are. So, that is not an issue. Legal also considered this from the standpoint of the civil service rules and regulations. There is one concern, and this is open for discussion. The civil service rules and regulations require that classifications must be approved by Commissioners Court before they're adopted by Civil Service Commission. So, it would be a two-step process. If it's the commission's pleasure to pass this and make the change that is being requested, we would approve it and it would have to go up the flagpole through open records with the Civil Service Commission as well. My belief is that they would most likely go ahead and approve it because Commissioners Court does have significant, significant authority on this issue. The other issue that arises with respect to the civil service rules is that Section 2.37 titled "Law Enforcement Promotions" has certain requirements for promotions. But when this was written at the time, it was written in a way that made it applicable to the Sheriff's Department only and does not touch upon other law enforcement offices or departments in the county. So, there is most likely no current law enforcement promotion provision in the civil service rules. However, anybody that is reclassified to a higher rank raises a chain of command issue. In my discussions with the constable, it is a reasonable thing to have a chain of command in place in a, in a police organization. The only concern from the civil service standpoint would be, any individuals promoted or reclassified into those positions would now be civil service protected in those, in those positions. So, anyone that won an election, if it was a different constable, would come in with a command structure that is protected under civil service. That's just for your consideration, whether you're, you're willing to do the change or not. Those are the legal issues, they're not insurmountable, they don't make it impermissible. Those are the things that you need to think about.
Arnold? I'm just trying to figure out, what do we do to the other constables that, I know that, I know that you, that, see, you don't really supervise the bailiffs. The only time you do it, as you, as you mentioned, was during an emergency situation, which is not an everyday, everyday thing. I just don't know if we need to be developing that kind of a structure. If we do, then every constable's gonna come back saying, "You know, I want a lieutenant, I want this, I want that."
The thing is that they're, they're already there.
What do you mean, they're already there?
Every department already has a command structure. They're just not recognized.
They have titles, but they're not recognized by the Commissioners Court. Like, they'll have someone that's their lieutenant or their sergeant or whatever, but it's a name only among them.
No, but they get, but they get paid the same, though, don't they?
Right.
And the issue here is one, acknowledging the command structure and also, you know, providing more money to them. So, then, when the other constables are gonna come and they're gonna say, "You know what, I want you to recognize my command structure and, because we're gonna follow suit with the other constables doing, then y'all need to do the same thing, so go find the money someplace."
Well, right now, the only thing that we're asking for is the recognition of the command structure on this item.
No, I know, that's why you wanted to go to this item first before you went to the financial side.
Exactly.
I know.
And we don't even know if the money's there yet.
Well, I know that, but I'm saying, the reason you want to go here is because that sets the template for the other item and then also, well, you've already recognized the command structure, so now they got to be compensated in order to recognize the command structure.
Correct.
Right? Yeah, come on. You know, but the other constables though, are going to have the same issue. I mean, I don't disagree with having a structure, I don't disagree with that. You know, I don't know if you need to have it to the degree where you've got lieutenant, second lieutenant, I mean, you know, four or five down the line. When Constable Burdenas was here, I asked him, you have a command structure, who's in charge, and he identified him right away. And I think what you discussed was, well, I have nobody that can take over, why not? All the other constables have a second in command, maybe not entitled.
They are entitled.
Okay, or, yeah, but it's that, but it's here because we don't recognize it.
Well, the only thing that I would argue right now, Judge, is that the only thing that's before this court is Precinct Two. I feel that if another constable believes that they want to set up their own structure, then they should come before Commissioners' Court, make their argument-
That's a good point.
And say, you know what, I have, I only have three officers, so I don't need a chief deputy, a lieutenant, a sergeant, and a corporal, because I don't even have the personnel to fill the slots, but I would like to have a chief deputy. Or whatever the need of the particular department is. I'm here on behalf of my department-
I understand.
And I'd like for you to consider that, and I'm here because of the special needs and the unique situation that I'm in. And I find myself in a situation where my previous or current sergeant right now has told me, I can't, I can't do, I can't tend to 15, 17 different bosses, which is every individual judge, and also deal with what's going on in security downstairs. Can you get me some help? So I promoted someone to the position of corporal to help me address the issues downstairs. So now I have also a field unit that works in the field, so I need some kind of supervision there in case of an incident, so I have a lieutenant. The chief deputy obviously covers helping me supervise all the aspects, helping me deal with all the judges, helping coordinate everything for me, as well as Commissioners' Court agendas, disciplinary actions, whatever is the issue at the time.
If you didn't, if the constable's office, because remember that the way that the security is structured and all that is because the sheriff's office is allowing that to happen. So if the sheriff at any given moment says, you know what, I'm going to take it back, after you do that and the judges supervise their bailiffs, how many deputy constables would you have?
Four.
Okay.
And I would still need-
Yeah, those four could be your top four people, so you have no deputy constable.
Actually, there's two that would be on side of the security side and two that would fall under my department, but that's just because of, I'm using all my resources-
Right, no, I understand, I'm just trying to, I mean, I know you're fighting for your precinct, I understand, but let's look at it, I asked specifically a couple of times ago, who supervises the bailiffs? The judges do.
Correct.
But they're on this list, correct or no?
No.
The 17? That's just security then?
Yes.
That you've got. The sheriff has acquiesced that authority to you, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so at any given moment, they could say, I want them back. So now you don't have whatever number that they take over to supervise.
Correct.
So what would that do to your command structure?
That would probably stay where it's at, or I guess that would be subject to the sheriff, I don't know.
Okay, all right, I understand. Any other constable want to make a comment on this or no? Are y'all going to come back to us later with a command structure and, Cesar? Come on, Deb, come on up, you might as well take them all.
They should have done it during the budget process.
Oh, the budget process is over.
Yeah, well, she's authorized to give them money. Martha, you did that last week.
Morning Commissioners.
Go ahead.
You know, I agree, I do have a lieutenant and a sergeant. My lieutenant takes care of, you know, pretty much the office duties and stuff, and the sergeant now is on the patrol guys. I do believe they need to be compensated, because I, especially my lieutenant, I give him a lot of extra duties, you know, and I know that money's tight. Maybe, I know this year it's, the budget's been approved, but maybe next year, you know, you guys can consider, if this happens for Abel's department, that's great, and maybe next year, you know, these, the other constable's offices can join in then, you know. I do have some fun nightie money, I don't know how long that will last, I have about maybe $8,000 in that right now where I could supplement that pay with that, but I'd like the county to, one day, take that over if possible.
So you have a command structure, but it's not on your salary schedule as a command, like, because they're all deputy constables, right? Okay.
And they know this when they take their position.
Right, right, okay.
But I do feel they need to be compensated for the extra duties they do.
Mr. Burdenas, I, excuse my voice again, I agree with you completely, I think what happens is, you know, during the budget process, Abel came forward and said, hey, I'd like to do this, and again, everybody go, hey, good for Abel. But you had, everybody had the same opportunity.
Yes, sir.
And it's just, and I agree that, and I, the other, on the other foot, if we set a precedent now and help Abel do what I think has to be done-
It opens the doors for everybody else.
We need to recognize the separate ranks because it'll come back and bite us in the future that this person had extra duties, yet he never got compensated extra money for his, for being the number two guy, the number three guy. Because he had other responsibilities besides just being a deputy constable, and I think we have a legal issue there, so, but, I agree, I think you need to come back and, you know, how much is it going to be, it's $8,000? Is that what it is? It's $8,000, and I think if you have $8,000, if you want to do with yours-
Why don't I burn it all on that right now?
No, but I would certainly support next year that you, I think all the constables should have, if the sheriff's allowed to do it, then why aren't you? I think you should have the same latitude that the sheriff's department has to do that, whether it's their jailers or their administration staff. They have detectives and they all get a different base, and there's no reason for you not to have the same structure.
Cesar?
That's my same argument, I do have supervisors that haven't been compensated since I took office and I believe they should.
Well, I appreciate the Constable Gomez bringing it, okay, and I agree that we do have a command structure.
I believe he's in a different position, he's got a lot more responsibilities as far as the courthouse and stuff like that.
Correct.
But in my precinct, we still need the structure to be there.
And you have a structure, don't you?
Yes, I have.
But it's, but they're just all, like I said, they're all deputy constables, they're not like that.
It's been there for over eight years.
And do you have somebody that's a lieutenant and, you know, or chief deputy, lieutenant and all that stuff?
Yes, I have two lieutenants, men in the office, one in Harlingen and one in-
And they all get paid the same?
Yes, sir.
See, the only-
The only difference is their longevity, if they've been here longer, that's the only difference.
And here, there's no accounting for longevity, it's just whomever gets in-
The longevity had nothing to do with it.
Right, it's just whomever gets into the slot. Okay, I just, yes, sir. Juan?
I'm just here representing Constable Joe Calazos and he said the same thing for him. He wants the supervisors and different-
But within his salary structure, is there already a command structure, just they're all getting paid the same?
Yeah, everybody's the same, but there is a structure right now, and it's recognized under him under the department.
Do all the constables have the same structure?
Basically, yes.
Basically. What I would entertain, I mean, I don't, I mean, if we're going to approve the structure today, then you work it with no compensation and you do it all next year to everybody the same. Either that, or you do everybody the same. There was an effort many years ago to equalize all the salaries for all the JPs, for all the constables, for all the deputies, everything. Now, we're getting away from that and what's going to happen is that, once we do this one, then we need to do you all's. Well, do them all. Either do them all now-
I have absolutely no-
No, I know, but-
-problem with doing them all. My problem with doing them all is that if you're going to hold back my request because they're not, you don't want to do them right now-
I can do them, we can find the money. But I don't think it's fair to find cherry pick one, we found $8,000 and all that.
No, we're all here as a unit. We all agreed that we, this is something that we all need, that we all, that we all want. The problem is that I'm kind of the one spearheading the deal here, I'm the crybaby, and I'm the one that's put the item on the agenda for request, and I would love for everybody to be standardized right now.
And my concern is that your deputies, besides these four people here, okay, that you have listed in these positions, would not be getting the equal pay that all the other deputy constables get.
They are.
Are they 500?
Yes, sir.
Now they're getting $1,000.
No, they're getting $1,000.
It's all gone back to the way it was.
See, the way it's happened-
So now it's a petition you brought before us is no longer on the table?
It was, there should be a revised format in there.
Yes, sir.
In the last meeting, if you all recall, Commissioner Benavides, there was some discussion about being able to find the money from another source.
Bottom line is, they're all getting their $1,000 and-
Yes, that has nothing to do with it anymore.
That's correct. So right now, it's the structure.
Correct.
The other item is that, find, yeah, that's where the money's going to come from, and I think-
That was Martha's item.
Yeah, and that's the other item about the auditor, I'm not going to support, I mean, we had a long discussion with the district judges about auditors and getting her more staff, and that was the consensus, that's what the court adopted the last time, the budget's been adopted. I'm not going to go back and always say, well, take it away from her and forget that spot, now we're back, because that's not going to sit very well, you know, with the building next door, because the commitment we made was to give her another, you know, another auditor because they were short-staffed.
Well, but I don't think that was an issue. I think we were-
I think it was an issue because we had some money left over from the grievance that went towards that position. And she was going to find the money to try to find, or even hi, or even delay the hiring of the auditor, that's where this-
Correct.
That's what Commissioner Sanchez mentioned, a $10,000 shortfall beginning next year, you know, on that. Well, if we do this today, let's say, give you the funding, then you can start with a larger shortfall next year than the $10,000, because you have to equate all the constables doing the same thing, giving them the same amount of money, so now you're talking, starting off not with $10,000, with maybe $40,000 shortfall. So $10,000 was difficult, $40,000 is going to be worse. That's why I'm saying, either we do it all today, or we defer everybody, set up the command structure the way it should be, and then next year, we do that into the budget. So for now, like you said, this item is on to define a command structure. I have no problem with that, putting it in writing for now. So I'm ready to entertain a motion to adopt the command structure, and I would ask all of y'all to do the same thing, bring that same structure for us, it's a budget-neutral item, you're just going to reallocate, but the pay's the same for now, correct? Can you all do that for the next meeting?
Is there a legal opinion on any of this? I mean, if we adopt a command structure-
Yes.
Can we have all these folks paid the same amount of money?
All the, all the people in the various ranks paid the same amount of money?
Yeah.
Well, I'm sure that you could.
I mean, we have a command structure, except it hasn't been recognized by Commissioners' Court.
Correct.
Because Constable Burdenas just told us that he has a command structure in place, Constable Calazos has a command structure in place, because I-
Constable Diaz?
Constable Diaz has a command structure in place, except that it's not recognized.
I think the legal issue right now with the, with those command structures are they're essentially honorary positions, and so if you took the position away, for whatever reason, there wouldn't be any recourse. Once it's formalized in civil service, it's enshrined as a civil service-protected job benefit. And so, you want to be thoughtful about who you put in those positions, if you're classifying them, and having civil service recognize that change, because they do get a protection.
What would that do? Let's say I'm the constable right now and we approve this structure. So I lose my next election and the next constable comes in, if they're going to be protected by civil service, then the next constable cannot put somebody that he trusts in that top position.
That is true. Once these positions are filled and the ranks are approved by this commission and civil service, those are pretty much set in stone, and so another elected official that might take over that office is going to have these people protected by civil service in those positions. Now, when civil service was set up, from what I can tell, the sheriff got several positions that were exempted for his right-hand people, the chief, chief jailer, the chief, and the reason that happened that way is that he paid attention. Apparently, our constables didn't participate in the process, they at that time could have requested that the chief deputy be exempt from civil service protection, so they could bring in a trusted confidant and a close associate. Unfortunately, that's not the situation now. And if we approve these other ranks, those ranks as well will have protection. So you're going to lock in a command structure, and you can do it, there's nothing improperly legal, but it is a consideration from a practical standpoint, and that's the point I would make about that.
And my response?
Not only that, though, there's a legal statute that says that the constable has the authority to set up in his office the resources as best he sees fit-
Right.
-in regards to his staff.
Right. And that is-
So if we set up, if we set up, you know, whatever this is, operational supervision-
It takes away the-
It takes away their own authority.
Right, it puts it into civil service.
Right.
Which it's currently not in it.
According to the statute, they have the authority to do this.
You said resources? So you're saying resources, I mean, the money we budget them?
Yeah, we set the budget, okay?
Yeah.
We set the budget and they have the authority to-
But are we talking about the resources given to that department?
The structure of the department.
Or the resources given to that individual?
They structure, I mean-
So what you're saying is that-
What I'm saying is you choose who you want to be responsible, whether it be detective or whatever, I mean, like, you do that, right? You know, you make that choice.
I'll ask you a question, do or do we not have a legal issue, if you have a command structure and your number two and your number three people are making the same as the rank and file?
No.
We don't have a-
No, I mean, the issue of pay, if you're not going to pay the different grades, there is no issue.
Should you have to pay them?
No.
You do not have to pay them, definitely.
No, you do not.
That's unfortunate.
I mean, according to the statute, you know, you have the authority to hire and fire and direct their daily activities, and the constable has the authority to determine how to use the-
The hire and firing, though, is, that's altered by civil service.
Right, yeah.
So everybody that's in there is now protected.
But they have that authority.
Yes.
Okay? And they also have the authority to determine how to use their resources that they have. And that means that you decide, you decide who you would trust is to be like, you know, like your assistant, or if I'm gone, you know, you respond to. I mean, that's according to what it says here.
So where are we at? My argument to that is, all the positions are covered, regardless of how you look at them. And the same argument just came up at the sheriff's office. If, even if you said, okay, we're going to exempt one position from the constable's office, the person who is currently there would be covered anyway, until he leaves. Do you understand? Whether he's a chief deputy, a lieutenant, a sergeant, he's covered anyway.
Yeah, because they were covered as deputy constables.
Exactly. The position would be covered until that person leaves.
I don't, you know, again, I don't have a problem with the, with setting up a structure. I have a problem with the money at this point, okay? I just, I know you're the one that brought it forward, but that happens like anything else, somebody brings something forward and it opens up, you know, other discussion, then all of a sudden becomes, you know, that affair, like the road situation we just had, somebody brought it, and now we may be faced with doing something similar everywhere else, but we're going to have to bite the bullet, right? But that's going to be our decision to make. My deal is that, I think you're right in setting it up, everybody has them, except they're not formally recognized. I just have an issue with not paying everybody the same. And then what, then what do you do with that? And I'm not going to, I'm not going to support taking away from one department that we've already budgeted to give to somebody else.
No, 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 no. If you recall the last meeting, there was a request by Commissioner Benavides or Commissioners' Court for the auditor to attempt to find additional fundings to adopt the matrix without it affecting the employee salaries. So I guess in the next item, we would have to find out whether or not there is, or she wasn't able to find, the resources. But for right now, I'm asking, under this item, that the rank be recognized-
I got you, I understand that.
And then we'll move over, and if there isn't any money-
I understand that.
Then there isn't any money.
I understand that. And the reason for recognition is what? What's the reasoning for recognizing this new command structure? I mean, officially recognizing it?
Because they're already there.
Right, so why recognize them? I mean, the constables have them already there as well, and they're not recognized.
Correct.
Why? I mean, that's my question, why is it, why is there a need to recognize them unless there's no, unless there's some money attached to it?
Well, why was there a need for the sheriff's office to recognize the corporal's positions at the jail? Why does the sheriff's office have a need to have?
Well, but you're not the sheriff's office, I mean, you know, I mean-
It's a structure, it doesn't matter.
It's the same thing.
It's the same thing.
Constables are process servers.
Yeah, I mean, I think you're getting away, I mean, the problem, the problem that's happened over the years, the constables have become mini sheriff's departments, when initially what their primary function is to be the bailiff for the JPs and process servers. It's kind of gone away from that now, and now we're in this situation, here where everybody is doing little different things. You got con- your predecessor, all he did was civil, you know, was process serving. That's all he did, and others have, have, you know, they've, they've taken on a different role now. Now, I, I can't answer those questions of why the sheriff does this, why the sheriff... All I can tell you is that the main role of, of the, of the constable's office is to be JP bailiffs and process servers. That's the main role. That's all I can tell you.
I mean, I've made my argument, and I'd ask the commission to take a vote, and if that's the decision of the commissioners' court...
I understand that, but if the...
Court's ready to make a motion either way, I mean, I...
We did.
Dan made a motion, I made a second.
Dan, you made a motion?
Yeah.
Okay, to recognize what?
To approve it.
To approve it, okay, I never, I didn't hear that, I'm sorry. Moved by Commissioner Sanchez, taken by Commissioner Hernandez. Any further discussion? All in favor, sent out by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I, I will have to oppose, Judge, cause I, I, unless we do this across the board for every constable...
Well, it is.
No, this is precinct two.
It, it will have to be, they'll have to bring it back, but I see what we...
Right.
But, but I, I don't see why, you know, unless there's money associated with it, you know, there, there's no need to support this, cause it's already... The fact that, that I recognize these positions, you know, would make me responsible to provide money for them.
I will with a condition.
The only way there will ever be money is they have to have the positions first to come to request the money. They can't get the money first and then request positions. So by doing this, they can request the money for next, for next budget. Obviously, this commission does not wanna give it to them this time, but the slots will be there for next time, and they could make the formal request. Whether we approve it or not, that time is up to us.
Right.
And it goes back to, if there's money in the budget.
And like we said, when the sheriff brought his, that's why I said, if we're gonna do it for one, we gotta do it for all. So, you know, I, I think we have to, because we did it for the sheriff.
But the sher- yeah, I agree, but the sheriff's was budget neutral.
Well, this, this is two.
Well, right now it is, but if it weren't, there wouldn't be another agenda item on there to discuss funding.
Well, but... Well, let's take one at a time.
It's still, it's, it could still, I mean, the only way it's not budget neutral is if money's found, but that may not happen.
Okay, well, Commissioner Benavides has a condition.
I, I don't have a problem with voting for it, okay?
Thank you.
I'll, I could support it, but I will tell you that, uh, as far as the money is concerned, I am not willing to take that, uh, part-time slot away from the auditor.
That's fine.
I mean, that's...
Okay. An emotion, a second?
And when I, when you say that, that, uh, what I said, at the time that we, uh, gave her the money, that's when I made that, that comment, not in regards to your issue. I said, you know, we're gonna get the money, and she said it wasn't enough money.
We have discussed the issue of the auditor. It is not an issue, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, well...
The question was, if there was additional funding, if there, if there was any money additionally in regards to the auditor.
To the auditor, exactly.
So that's gonna be the next question. If there isn't, there isn't.
That's fair.
Setting aside the auditor.
Okay, and of course, if we're gonna do it for everybody, then we can do it for everybody.
Correct.
Okay?
All right. So I had a motion, a second, I had, um, one, two, three, I'll vote yea, one nay. Uh, it passes. Okay, I've been asked to, on item L, I have a motion to table?
Yes, motion.
Moved by Commissioner Hernandez to table item L. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Gatsa, all in favor, sent out by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries? Uh, on item O, do I hear a motion to table? By Commissioner Hernandez, do I have a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Gatsa, all in favor, sent out by saying aye? Any opposed, item carries? Item M? Thank you. Consideration and discussion of setting fund balance requirements and compliance with Gatsby 54?
So, so basically, you just have a designation? Is that what it is?
Judge, commissioners, um, I sent, uh, some information relative to, um, or did I? I, I sent the backup, or, no, I did not send backup for the fund balance, I'm sorry, there's so many stuff.
Martha, real quick, on the, what you've done, can you tell me now? Okay, you've set the, the fund balance for the coming year, for the 2014 fiscal year?
We, we're asking the court's discretion, uh, that, the fund balance for FY14 is at whatever, uh, you know, it's a zero, whatever rolls forward, okay?
Well, don't say zero.
Well, it's not zero, but whatever rolls forward, okay?
It better not be zero.
But, but, uh, what we're asking the court is to designate what are the commitment levels that the court wants on the fund balance for...
All the components?
For the corolla components.
Okay, give us, give us what the options are.
Uh, what you have done in the past is we have a, we have a restricted fund balance, we have committed fund balance, we have assigned fund balance, unassigned. Uh, in the past, we had, uh, five hundred thousand, which was, uh, reserved for indigent defense. That used to be one point five million. This past year, it's five hundred thousand. Uh, reserved for, uh, pending judgments or anticipated judgments, or in the event we have judgments against the county, uh, we have a half a million dollars. And that has rolled forward consistently every year. Uh, what we do not have anything, what we are requesting the court, uh, to also tell us is on the, the funds that were designated for the IT improvements, there is approximately three hundred and two thousand in funds that has not been, uh, used yet. And part of that is, uh, the auditor's, uh, audit, uh, software update, which that is, we're paying as the services are being received. So we request the court to roll that over as a, as a assigned or a committed fund balance for this coming year. And there's also some, uh, computer, uh, uh, equipment that is also pending. Uh, I believe there's, uh, maybe a server or something that was still pending that has not been, uh, purchased yet or ordered. So right now, we have three hundred and two thousand, that is, uh, unencumbered at this time, and I am asking the court, uh, to roll that as a sign for this coming fiscal year, so they can, so that we can reflect it as such for usage, okay? So I don't know if the court still wants to continue with the half a million dollars for the indigent defense, if y'all want to increase that. Uh, I'm confident that the court will still want to use the half a million dollars for judgments.
But, but if you increase it, you're gonna have to take it from someplace else.
Well, uh, which, for the, for the indigent defense?
Yeah.
Uh, what it would do, would, it would cut back on the balance of the fund balance that we have on assigned.
Right.
However, the unassigned fund balance and the...
Well, why can't we just leave it as is?
You can.
I guess, what, what is it, if we leave it as is, you know, what, what, what is your projected fund balance? Cause you're, you're using projections right now, correct?
Correct, yes.
What is the projected fund balance, and how close do we get to our policy of sixty days?
Uh, I, I believe that for FY13, the county will exceed the sixty-day, uh, projected that we, that we need, as adopted by the, you know, by commissioners' court.
In, in thirteen years that I've been around?
I, I anticipate we will, we will exceed it.
What motion do we need to leave it as is?
Um, I need for y'all to set, set the, the amounts that you want to set it as, as is, which is...
So moved.
And, and let me identify it, at, uh, you're setting aside half a million for pending litigation, half a million for indigent defense, and the rest is unassigned. Uh, you have non, non-spendable, which is usually your pending encumbrances, your inventory, which that rolls forward every year. And I'm asking you to reserve the three hundred and two thousand that was still pending expenditure for the, for the IT needs, which were three hundred and two thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Gatsa, second by Commissioner Benavides to adopt the fund balances as presented by the auditor. All in favor, sent out by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries?
Judge, if I may please, can I ask you to, uh, open up the, uh, budget amendments again, please? And the only thing that I...
Go ahead.
That, that I did not, that I did not, uh, advise the court is, y'all received a CD with the FY14 salary schedules. Uh, I want to make sure that you are aware that you have approved those as well.
Correct.
Thank you.
Correct. Okay. Presentations of Ocean Trust on the Gulf of Mexico?
Judge, the request for the desired date, if you look at the document, was ten-ten, so...
Oh, we gotta hit her so...
I suggested we table it, somebody overlooked it.
What do you mean, ten-ten?
That's what he wanted to make the presentation. Move to table.
Second. So I guess they got over anxious, put it on, but it's already been resubmitted for ten-ten, for the next meeting.
All right, so let's go back. Commissioner Sanchez, you wanna just retract the motion, Commissioner Benavides, and just table that item regarding the time and the date?
I did.
She just did.